Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson, City Manager Isaiah Hughley, Pops Barnes, District One, Glenn Davis, District Two, Bruce Huff, District Three, Toya Tucker, District Four, Charmaine Crabbe, District Five, Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tim and District Six,
Joanne Kogle, District Seven,
Walker Garrett, District Eight, Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor,
Tyson Begley, Post Ten at Large Counselor,
Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council, and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
June 27th City Council Meeting. It's a pleasure to see so many seats filled. We will begin the city's business right after we invite our pastor up to provide thanks for us. Is Pastor Walter Johnson here? Pastor, welcome sir from God's Way Ministries. We appreciate you being with us, sir, if you'll come to the podium. It's on, turn, push it one more time. There you go.
Praise the Lord, amen. I just want to thank God for allowing us all to be here today. I've had the opportunity to shake the mayor's hand a few times and I just want to thank God for him most of all. We give honor to our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. We thank him for all of you that are here, Lord God, even from the little smallest to the oldest, Lord God. But we thank you so much for these counselor members, Lord God. We thank you for our mayor, Lord God. And we ask you today, Lord God, whatever goes on in this place today, Lord God, we honor you. And we ask you, Lord God, if there's any problem situations, Lord God, we know that you already know about them. And we're going to ask you, Lord God, to lead our leaders, Lord God, to solve them in a very good way, Lord God. We give you glory and we thank you for allowing us to be a part of this, amen.
Amen. Pastor, thank you, sir, and please thank you, church, for sharing you with us this evening. All right, if you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to flag. Thank you. All right, first order of business is approval of the minutes from the June 20th meeting. Motion and a second to approve them. Are there any discussions or edits that need to be made? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Are there any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Next, we've got a couple of proclamations. First one up is to celebrate Nova Python Day. So what we'll do, if we can get all of the cheerleaders to come up by the podium, and if their coach is with them or anybody else that is a part of this, y'all come on up. All right, and you push your... All right, Counselor Kogle will present this proclamation. Wait till everybody gets up.
You guys look all so fancy. Oh. If any of you want to take any pictures, you can come up behind Counselor Thomas.
You're welcome to stand up here.
Oh, it's like the whole place.
Should be one for every cheerleader.
Welcome, ladies. Let them get up here. All right. I'll do my best, in my best cheerleading voice. Whereas United Cheerleading's Nova Pythons of Columbus, Georgia, a senior level three coed competitive all-star cheerleading team coached by head coach Ms. Hood and assistant coach Ms. Turner, took the stage at the prestigious Summit National Championships at ESPN Wide World of Sports at Disney World on April 29th and April 30th, 2023 in Orlando, Florida. And whereas the Summit National Championship is held annually and teams work hard all season to earn the invitation to compete, only 2,337 teams and 37,000 athletes from the United States, Norway, Japan, Australia, and the United Kingdom and Canada are invited. And whereas only 15% of all-star cheerleading teams were invited to compete at the Summit National Championships, and the odds of becoming a Summit National, a Summit Championship is approximately 0.03%. And where the Nova Pythons completed the preliminary division on Saturday, April 29th, 2023, and earned the chance to compete in the finals on Saturday, April 30th, 2023. And whereas Nova Pythons' talent, hard work, dedication, amazing coach, and a showstopping routine in which the Nova Pythons transformed into the Nova Ninjas, they beat the odds and became the Summit Champions. And whereas the spirited and dedicated Nova Pythons team brought the championship title and the infamous championship bring home to Columbus, Georgia. And where on the international stage, the Nova Pythons 2022 to 2023 team represented our city well and made us proud. The citizens of Columbus, Georgia congratulate the Nova Pythons for this remarkable season. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Mayor Henderson of Columbus, Georgia, hereby proclaim Sunday, April 20th or April 30th, 2023 as Nova Python Day.
Coach, do you want to say a few words? And we'll get them all to file by and say their name as they, one at a time, if you finish.
We're very honored to have this and appreciate all the support from the parents and the all-stars across the board and also Columbus, Georgia. And that's it. I'm Coach Mandy Hood, by the way, and these are some amazing athletes behind me.
Fantastic. Ladies, if you come up one at a time, just give your, give your name.
I'm Messiah, but I go as Mimi.
I'm Anaya, but I go by the goat.
I'm Hannah, I just go by Hannah, nothing special.
I'm Delaney.
My name's Abby.
My name's Lola.
Hi, my name's Denaya.
My name's Ivy.
My name's Kira.
My name's Alyssa.
My name is Evan.
My name's Gavin.
Got a few more to back?
I'm Emily.
I'm Samaya.
I'm Jabria.
I'm Avery.
My name's Lily.
My name's Elizabeth.
My name is Maggie.
And my name is Charzandra Turner, but I go by Coach Z because that name's very hard to pronounce.
Ladies, can't tell you how proud we are of you and what incredible credit that you bring to this entire region. And we see the parents back here, are there any, I don't know that there's any parents left in the audience, but if there are, would y'all stand up and let's give the parents a round of applause as well. All right, ladies, if you would, and gentlemen, y'all come through here and let them congratulate you and we'll pass out your... Congratulations, very proud of y'all.
Those are good odds.
Congratulations, congratulations, very proud of you. Good job. Very proud of you.
Yeah, look at that.
Oh, that's great, that's cool. Congratulations, congratulations. Good job. Congratulations, congratulations. Great job. Great job, congratulations. Great job, congratulations.
All right, superhero.
High five. Thank you, congratulations.
No Literacy Alliance.
I guess after they say something, then I'll give them back.
That's fine, whatever you want, that's fine. Well, they'll, they'll come up here to get their thing, so you can give it to them. Oh, they, no, they will be. And I think what you do is I'll buzz in, you just tell them that you... Congratulations, lady. Are you doing the next one? Or Pops is? All right. Pretty good way to start the meeting. All right, next, we've got another recognition. We have a resolution that'll be authored by Pop Barnes. I think Pops, you have that, would you push your light? There we go. And this is in recognition of the Georgia Police and Fire Games. So I'm going to invite our law enforcement personnel to come to the podium. Chief Scarpa, Chief Mathis, Sheriff Countryman, and of course, Mary Sherman is out here. And nothing sports-wise happens in Columbus without Mary's fingerprints on it.
Mayor and Counsel, it's my pleasure to read this resolution. It reads thusly, it says, "Whereas during the week of June 19th, 2023, Columbus, Georgia hosted the Georgia Police and Fire Games. Whereas the Georgia Police and Fire Games began in 1984 in Carrollton, Georgia as an opportunity for public safety agencies to compete and network throughout the state on a rotating basis. Whereas Columbus Fire and EMS Chief Sal Scarpa was instrumental in bringing the Georgia, the games to Columbus this year along with representatives from the Columbus Police Department, Muskogee County Sheriff's Office, and the Columbus Sports Council. And whereas through their efforts, Columbus has won the opportunity to host the Police and Fire Games in 2023 and 2024. And whereas this month, Columbus hosted over 700 public safety competitors from across the region, representing 30 different agencies. Competitors participated in 40 different events over the course of seven days, including softball, whitewater rafting, basketball, golf, cycling, tennis, bowling, volleyball, billiards, weightlifting, toughest firefighter and toughest competitor, among others. And whereas sponsors from across the region and the Columbus community supported the 2023 Police and Fire Games, making them a huge success with a positive economic impact and showcasing Columbus as a great place to host large-scale competitions. And whereas the efforts of Columbus Fire and EMS, the Columbus Police Department, the Muskogee County Sheriff's Office, and the Columbus Sports Council in bringing the Police and Fire Games to Columbus in 2023 and 2024 are worthy of special recognition by this council. Now, therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, and we express our deep appreciation to Columbus Fire and EMS Chief Sal Scarpa, interim Police Chief Sony Mathis, Sheriff Greg Countryman, and the Columbus Sports Chief Scarpa and the Columbus Sports Council and all their personnel and volunteers who contributed to the planning and the success of the Police and Fire Games held in Columbus, Georgia. Let a copy of this resolution be forwarded to each of the above-named agency. I move for its adoption.
All right, there's a motion to adopt, is there a second? All right, motion's second, all in favor, please say aye and stand. Chief? Chief, I'm sorry, Chief Scarpa. There's too many chiefs up here. Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, and all that are here. I know I speak for all the folks behind me, I want to say thank you to so many people that have made these games a success and have been a great boon for our city. These are, these games allowed us not only to come together as competitors, but allowed our community to recognize our public safety personnel as fathers and mothers, sons and daughters, and public servants of our community who are regular people in addition to being great public servants. There are too many folks, quite honestly, to thank that make this, that have made these games a success. But I do want to recognize a couple of agencies that were involved, particularly from the city of Columbus. Our Parks and Recs Department, Holly Browder and her team were tremendous in helping us get all the things that we needed for all the different events that occurred throughout the city. The Golf Authority, Jim Arnt, and his team at the golf courses, ensuring that those facilities, as always, are immaculate and made for great sports, great sports events. Haley Tillery at the Trade Center, of course, as always, does a tremendous job in supporting our events. We have so many community partners that were not only contributors and sponsors of the events, but hosted events like the Marriott Hotel, CrossFit CSG, Whitewater Express, St. Luke's Church, Cascade Hills Church, Cannon Group Pub, Stars and Strikes. And of course, I would be remiss if I did not recognize the young lady behind me who, along with our Deputy Chief Daniel Hord, really ramrodded this entire event from the Sports Council and brought these games to Columbus. The games, while we all know the purpose of the games is to win, right? And I didn't want to share this too loud in crowd, y'all can't read this, but in the back, I had this made up. It says, "Columbus Fire and EMS 2023 Police and Fire Games Champions." I set this on our table. But I did allow the Police Chief and the Sheriff to come sit with me, so it was, it was pretty cool. But in all seriousness, again, the purpose of the games is to win. The Fire Department did take the vast majority of the medals, but we did have great competition and quite honestly, great fun with our law enforcement partners. And we're very excited about next year's events and looking forward to competing. So thank you all for your support, I know many of you are out there participating and supporting, and we truly appreciate it. Mayor, did you want to say anything about the cup? To help organize it?
From a planning perspective, it gave us a challenge. We do softball all year long, and so being able to host 40 events in a week setting, over 700 competitors, with this great team behind us, memories were made, great teamwork, we appreciate being a part of the team.
Thank you for what you do. I think Counselor Kogle has a presentation to make.
Chief Scarpa, you kind of stole my thunder there, but I take your little plaque and I raise you a giant cup. So, and the, and the cup does say Columbus Fire and EMS 2023 on it, and hopefully you'll give the other entities a chance to win in the future. But it was really fun watching a lot of the trash talk. A little bit of a competitor myself, so I did get a kick out of all of the back and forth on Facebook and on Instagram. So I, you could really tell the amount of camaraderie that all of the departments had across the board and I'm looking forward to 2024. So you can take this and... Raise it high.
Hey Chief, hey Chief, you need me to carry that for you?
In fairness, we will offer our Sheriff and our Chief equal time. I mean, I don't...
I just want to say thank you, Chief Scarpa, he, they did do a wonderful job. And more than being competitive, it gave us a chance to see each other outside of work and we got to build some friendships. But I did see the Chief carrying a big banner across the parking lot one day, and I thought it was just moving by itself, it was bigger than him. And it had all the, the winning trophies on there, and of course, they did have more muddles than anybody else. But I had to carry, help him carry it back to his car.
Sheriff?
Thank you so much, Mayor and Counsel, City Manager, and City Attorney. Mayor, you've heard a lot of trash talk from us in our public safety meetings and probably over the last two months. And at the last meeting, you know that I brought him a championship belt that...
I didn't see you give it to him, though. I saw you bring it.
Well, myself and Chief Mathis is gonna, we're gonna both give him something when he leaves here.
I'll bet.
We got some for Chief Scarpa, but we just want to thank you guys for your support and for you guys coming out to support our men and women in public safety. And we had, that was probably the most fun and the most that I've laughed in many, many years. And for those of you that did not see the three-point shootout with, with my chief deputy Larry Parker, I know that the mayor laughed for about 10 minutes at you in our last public safety meeting, but...
Not necessarily true.
But I would ask that you go to our Facebook page and take a look. His new name is N1, out of 25 shots, he hit one. So, but we had a lot of fun and we're going to come back next year. But we took the gold and the heavy stuff like bench press, things like that, and the physical matches. And I think that the fireside, that they didn't add basket weaving and coloring and things like that. You know, so they got more points in those areas, but thank you so much for having us.
Well, in all seriousness, we're extremely proud of all the members of our public safety departments. And it gives us a chance to see you guys let your hair down and have a little fun and get a little competitive with one another. And it reminds us every day how fortunate we are that you guys pledge to keep us all safe. So, thank you. If you would, come around, let us shake your hand, thank you. Congratulations. Tim, congratulations. Good job.
How come you couldn't throw up about 5:52, I was counting on it. Good job, man. They hit too many daves off. Good job, man, congratulations. Hey, girl, congratulations.
I did not make fun because I could not have hit the rim.
Counselor, Counselor Davis?
No, I was just going to say, I had a chance to go out for a little while and experience the games. I'm certainly so glad that, that we, we were able to host it here and without the participation of Public Safety and Fire and EMS. I mean, you wouldn't have the games, but what stood out to me was the camaraderie and the unity, not only here locally amongst our public safety and amongst Fire and EMS, but throughout the state and all the other agencies that were here. It was just a, just a really interesting atmosphere in seeing that. And, and you know, it's like, I guess the best way to describe is like one big family. I mean, that's what it really, one big family. But I just want to say, there's some great pickleball players out there. I can tell you what, I went and played, Counselor Kogle and I picked up a racket before we know it, we were playing three hours, but some of these guys got some great hand-eye coordination and never played before, and that was impressive. So y'all, get your pickleball game ready for next year. We'll get that going. And then, Mayor, I went out Saturday and watched a little softball for various reasons. But you know, Columbus has, people don't realize this, some of you do, but Columbus has a legacy of top-notch softball here. And that Fire Department, our Fire, our Fire Department has some incredible ball players. And they were softball players and, and they reminded me of the legacy that this town holds when it comes to softball. And we've had some really talented softball players and teams that have come through this, this city of ours. And I'll tell you what, that, that Fire Department team, that A, it's A-team, right? That's a top-notch team and certainly they, you ought to send them on a road trip, you know, and just start going around the country because those guys can play, you know, certainly play. So I just wanted to say that I'm glad we, again, we hosted it and, and certainly just what that meant to not only those involved, but to others watching speaks volumes. So thank you all.
Thanks, sir. All right, next, we've had some very good news on the economic development front over the past week with regards to an expansion from a valued community partner. And I've asked Gerald Mitchell, the President and CEO of the Columbus Chain of Commerce, to come give us a little bit of an update. Welcome, Gerald.
Hey, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. It's a pleasure to, to be here to address you guys with regard to economic development activity. Just to preface the, the most recent announcement, you know, just this last quarter, during this quarter, we've had about 20 economic development projects with legitimate inquiries to Columbus. And it's a testament to the fact that our marketing and other efforts with regard to getting on the radar from an economic development standpoint are working. When we see those inquiries, those inquiries are in the sectors related to battery production and storage, electric vehicle suppliers, aerospace, and defense. We're seeing some chemical production and we're also seeing just overall a good spirit or environment for advanced manufacturing. And I will tell you, the biggest challenge that we have, and I know the mayor and many of you are aware of this, is that a lot of these opportunities are looking for extremely large land assets. While we don't have the 2,000 or 3,000 acre site that you might see a Hyundai or a Kia locate on, we've got some assets in Muskogee Technology Park. And what we're working on right now are, you know, just concepts or ways that we can make those properties ready, pad-ready, cleared, graded, and ready to begin construction so that these companies embrace a speed to market that they might not find in other places. From a small business standpoint, we've continued to support the city in working through the ARP program and small business reimbursements related to COVID expenses. We held a CMMC training event, which was to make sure that small businesses in Columbus that are doing business with Fort Moore, I was going to say the wrong name, with Fort Moore, don't lose their contracts because of cybersecurity credentialing. We've begun a Mayor Small Business Roundtable just so that we can get somewhere between five and eight businesses on a quarterly basis with the mayor to talk about ways that we can improve the business environment for small business. And then we're consistently executing small business visits, going out to small businesses around the community. We've got a limited staff, but again, we're, we're making headway in terms of making those visits. And one of the other things we're doing this summer is we have a small business summer series. We're doing five events, we had the first one last week. We'll make sure that those emails continue to go out. Please encourage businesses in your district to, to attend those. Again, we work with different service providers to provide information on things like financial support, doing taxes, marketing, other things that can help small businesses continue to thrive and grow. One of the other very positive developments that's happened in the last 24 to 36 hours, as we continue to try to move the needle on robotics, there's actually some good news to report, which is Columbus is now the home to the proponent for robotics in the U.S. Army. The commanding general at Fort Benning is now the head of robotics for the entire, entire U.S. Army. All decisions related to robotics in the Army will happen here in Columbus. That is huge from the economic development standpoint, because what it does is it lets us have a different conversation with companies that might be interested in coming here, making investments, growing jobs. And frankly, that also changes our narrative with the Department of Defense in a good way. So again, wanted to make sure you're aware of that. The announcement that we're here to celebrate or share with you in more detail is the Pratt &amp; Whitney expansion announcement. Pratt &amp; Whitney currently employs over 2,000 employees, but they are going to add another 396 employees. They will spend $206 million on two separate components. One component will be a forging center, which is metalworking, CNC machining, those types of skillsets. And then the other is an engine center for aircraft engines. The estimated annual payroll is $25 million a year in new payroll for our community. That means those jobs are gonna average about $63,000 a year. They will work with Georgia Quick Start to ramp up, Georgia Quick Start and Columbus Tech to continue to ramp up with skillsets that are gonna support this growth. They are gonna start this construction process in September, which means that we'll see an immediate hit from the indirect jobs. That's construction workers and other people in that arena. And then we did offer a bond inducement for this endeavor. That will be about $1.1 million per year for, for 20 years. If you look at it in terms of the overall investment of $206 million, there's a really good payback for the community in that regard. And if you want to look at it a different way, one year of, at full speed, one year of, of annual salary or annual payroll pays back more than the entire abatement amount or, or bond amount. So again, just wanted to make sure that we added those, that information. We wish that we were able to provide more notice on these, these types of opportunities. But I can share with you that as the company worked through this, there were some personnel, some internal personnel scenarios that had to be resolved in other locations. We were under a non-disclosure agreement and could not share that more openly. So again, I am very proud to announce to you all that we were able to make the success with the company. And again, we look forward to continuing to grow with them as this company is consolidating, and there are gonna be more opportunities, we believe.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's good news. And hang on, Counselor Huff?
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Been waiting the news. There's been a lot of buzz around town. A few questions among councilors, but I had a conversation last week with a friend. And my comment was, how do you know all of this? I said, we're getting bits and pieces, so I'm glad you're here to update us.
Yes.
And on the training of the CNC machines and things of that nature, that's gonna run through Columbus Tech?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
Because we had some conversation in the past about that one machine. For people who don't know, that one machine can, can pay a person upwards of about $35,000, $40,000 starting pay, just learning that one machine. So that would be a boost to the people out there looking for a little schooling and a decent job.
Absolutely.
Also, the robotics piece, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, him being in charge, it being here, because we've been trying to talk behind the scenes and figure out how to get a connection so that both Columbus and Fort Moore could work together on that. Because I remember they had the robotics demonstration in Uptown a few years ago. So thank you for that, and happy in contact. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And again, you know, we're, we're excited about that. On the robotics piece, you know, what our real hope is, is that some of the things that they work on that might be classified or that are less classified, that we have the opportunity to build wherewithal that can start to commercialize some of those technologies off post if they're not at a, at a certain level of classification. So hopefully, we get to that. But that is a bigger collaboration with, with Fort Moore and the CG's office, so.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions of Mr. Mitchell?
Sure, good job. And I know it kind of came about all of a sudden. It's one of those things that went very quickly for a long period of time. Because the governor wanted to make sure that they made that announcement at that particular location along with Pratt &amp; Whitney. And we're, we're grateful for the state's help, and we're grateful for what the Development Authority and for what our chamber does. We just, we just hope we can get you in here about once every month talking about a new win.
I'd love for that to be the case. I will tell you, you know, it's, the activity has been, been pretty steady throughout the year. Like I said, in the last quarter alone, we've had about 20 inquiries. So again, I, I hope that we get to a point where we are here making these announcements every month.
There you go. Thank you very much, Gerald. Appreciate you waiting for us, too. All right. And that, that does it for my agenda. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes. Oh, I, I forgot to announce that Counselor, Counselor Garrett is on with us virtually. So he'll be casting his votes through the clerk's office, and, and we'll make sure his are recorded. All right, Mr. City Attorney?
All right, thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna go to our business item list and call up item one and item three together. This is operating budget for FY '24 and the millage rates for the three urban service districts and the bid districts. We understand there may be some amendments to the operating budget ordinance. And then there may also be some amendments to the millage rate ordinance in the way of a reduction, possibly. But we've got finances here, they may have to run some numbers, but we've got plenty of time to get this all done tonight, which is hopefully what we'll do under the charter. But both of those are on the table, Mayor, and we can take up first some amendments to the operating budget. I know Counselor Thomas had a couple.
Yes, and I know Chief Mathis is here, and we had spoken with him earlier, and he has a request to make. And I've got, I think, some numbers for you, Madam Budget Chair. So
Do I need to make these amendments before we make the motion to pass the budget?
Yes. Do you want to hear from Chief Mathis real quick before you?
Certainly, we can do that.
Okay. Chief, come on up and tell them what you're requesting.
Mayor, Council, citizens, first, I just want to say that I humbly come before you today to first ask you to help me fix a mistake that I made. While I came to Columbus Police Department, I had some lofty goals. I said it's very difficult to change the culture quickly, but I can change the atmosphere very quickly. And that's kind of what I've been trying to do, just change the atmosphere. And, and I told everybody that you'd probably feel it before you see it. Well, everybody should start, they should be feeling it right now. The atmosphere in the police department is changing from within. I have police officers come by my office every day and just say thank you for what you're doing. So in part of my, my systematic plan to improve morale, I'm trying to put people in the right places within the police department. Not making big changes, but just trying to make those little subtle changes to make the police department run a little smoother. And what I did is I looked at our FTOs who were not getting compensated for training. And then I looked at my manpower. I had 41 open corporal positions. So I asked, why can't we just make our 14 FTOs that are training people and not getting compensated? Why don't we just make them corporals, and that will eliminate the issue? Well, about two days before I was gonna do that, I had a sergeant come to my office. And his name is Chris Anderson. And he was telling me, and he came with a thick booklet, and he was telling me that for the last 20 years, the person doing his job and over quartermaster, vehicles, all equipment, property and evidence, and the building has been a command sergeant. And that what happened is, a year or so ago, the command sergeant was moved because he wasn't having good health, and he got put, put in that position. Well, ultimately, the, the command sergeant passed away, and they promoted someone else to that position and moved him to the, to the North Precinct. So Chris Anderson has been doing the job and not having the rank. So I thought about, I only have three command sergeants within the police department. One is at the South Precinct, one's the North Precinct, and one is my quasi-chief of staff in my office. And since I've been there, Alan Malone, who is a command sergeant in my office, has really been walking me through a lot of the processes, what I've been doing. And I honestly don't think that I would have made it as far as I made it so quickly without his assistance. So I asked him if he was on the lieutenant's promotional list, and he said, yes, he was highly qualified. So I, I thought about it, and I called the mayor, and I said, Mayor, can I make him a lieutenant, opening up a command sergeant position and, and making that right down there in property evidence? The mayor, in a couple of days, he called me back, and he said, yes to the corporal promotions, yes to the lieutenant, and yes to the command sergeant. What I, what I didn't know is that I didn't have a lieutenant position available. So what I suggested is we take a sergeant position, because now I have, I have 143 open positions, three of them being sergeant positions. Can't we just bump up a sergeant position to a lieutenant? It can't be more than, I don't know, 5% to 10%? It can't be that much impact to the budget when I'm already short 143 police officers. And so the, the mayor agreed, and I'd done it. I had a ceremony. I promoted all the FTOs. I promoted the command sergeants, and I promoted the lieutenant. And I have to tell you, in that promotional ceremony, I've been doing this for 30 years, that room was standing room only with police officers, all congratulating both the command sergeant, been there in almost 20 years, and also Alan Malone, who's been there about 20 years. And it was just a, it was a morale boost, being in that room with all that positivity. Well, a couple of days later, I was told that I did not have that lieutenant's position, and I wasn't really supposed to do that. So I humbly come before you today and ask you if I can take one of my three open sergeant positions and just bump that up to a lieutenant position. I don't know what the pay, extra money is, but it can't be more than a 5% to 10%. I don't know what the difference is between a sergeant and lieutenant, but that's why I'm here today.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we reclassify this sergeant's position to the lieutenant's position as the chief has requested.
Motion second. Any discussion?
If any of you are interested, it's about an $11,000 impact, $10,955, so. And I think that the chief has said that is available in the, already in the budget. So that's my motion.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Okay, now, that, that amendment is adopted to the operating budget. And then we can go forward with the next amendment proposal.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, when we were looking at the budget, the judges came to us with a position of the director of the Accountability Courts. And we looked at that, but at that point, we did not have a dollar amount for how much that would cost us. The Accountability Court, in case you're wondering, is the court that handles mental cases, DUI, Veterans Court, all of those kinds of things. And we have been asked to move, to create a Director of Accountability Court at step 34 on the pay scale. And so I, I move that we do that.
All right, that's a motion from the Budget Chair and a second. Any further instruct, discussion? All right, seeing not all in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed?
And with that, Mr. Mayor, I would move the adoption of the ordinance on the budget.
All right, there's a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance as amended.
Mayor, we got, wanna have some, we got one hand here asking for discussion.
We got it. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, Mayor, look, there's a number of council members who have been, many council members who have been having a conversation deliberating on the idea of lowering the millage. In the spirit of the citizens being very gracious to us and allow us, us to operate with dedicated pennies, we've got so many projects that are going on now because the citizens are deemed it worthy that we can be trusted with what they've allowed us to manage. And there's a lot of projects that are going on, and there's a lot of money that's being generated through those pennies over the course of time. And the citizens voted on that, and we're very grateful. It does a lot of things for our community. Therefore, on behalf of the council, what I would like to do is amend the operating budget. That would certainly, and I would certainly encourage unanimous, unanimous support by the rest of the council. I make a motion that we adjust the budget in the form of a reduction that will lower the millage rate for the citizens. That reduction would reflect in a millage decrease in the amount reduced equally in Urban Service District 1 and Urban Service District 2. There are several, the option that I'm putting on the table is seven, an amount of $7 million. $500,000 to come out of risk management, $500,000 to come out of contingency, $2 million to come out of the indigent care fund, and $4 million to come out of the, in, in, uh, fund balance. That's a total of $7 million. That's the option on the table. There's always the option of just taking it out of the fund balance. And doing this, it still keeps the reserve, or the fund balance, over 100 days. We, we are blessed to be able to operate at that level. The basis behind this is that it's a start. We balanced the budget this year, to the surprise of many of us, at 2%. We've been doing that for a long time. And we went through the process unbeknownst, unbeknownst to me and the rest of this council. I'm assuming that, to all of us. I remember the mayor asking me, I was speechless when talking to the Chief Tax Assessor about the increase in the tax digest, because it just, it was tremendously surprising. That's 10% over what we balanced our budget. The $7 million is, still leaves 2%, 3% increase in the tax digest as a cushion. I think there's other areas in the budget, too, that are, are cushioned well. And certainly, these funds, the categories that I'm talking about, can be replenished at any time if need be. So that's the motion that I've put on the table, and I, I think it's the right thing to do. I would ask that the Finance Director, there's item, if you notice, there's item number three on the City Attorney's agenda. And that is in reference to the millage. I would ask the Finance Director to, if she would, be so kind to calculate what the $7 million would equal in an equivalent reduction in both Urban Service District 1 and Urban Service District 2. And then
And four.
What about four?
And four.
Four is such a small piece, I'm not, I, I, I mean, if we
It might be a tiny amount, but it needs to be across all three.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. All right, that's a motion on, that's a motion on the table.
All right, there's a motion and a second. I think, Mr. City Manager, I'm gonna Um, I, I, I think, uh, Mr. City Manager, I'm gonna let you respond to that.
Well, well, Mayor, thank you, and, uh, I, I was trying to capture the numbers, um, that, um, heard from, um, Counselor Davis. And of course, um, obviously, as city managers, I, this is a surprise in what we are sharing today. First time I've heard it, and, and I do want the, um, CFO to, to speak to what this means to, uh, the budget, uh, and, um, and where it leaves us. I, I do know, I think I heard you say risk management, and I know that risk management is not a part of the operating budget, that's one thing. Uh, and I think that's why we need to hear from our CFO. Um, and I think I heard you say fund balance, five million. Um, and indigent care, I believe you said, two million. And so, um, I, I would like for the finance director, our CFO, I don't know how much you know about this, but, but I think it's a big decision, and we need to hear from the CFO.
That was a lot. Unfortunately, I didn't get it all down, but I did hear the four million dollars from reserves. Um, I did hear the, um, risk management allocation, which again, as the city manager mentioned, um, risk management is not a part of the, um, operating budget. Uh, the risk management fund is actually funded from all the other operating funds. It is what we refer to as an internal service fund. Um, so its sole purpose is to, um, provide services to, um, all the other funds. And so there's a, there's a budget that's established for, uh, risk management, and then that budget is sort of allocated out to all the other funds. So that, um, the only monies or the only funding that the risk management fund receives is from the other funds, um, for workers' compensation, um, costs and claims, and also for risk management costs and claims. Uh, we have accidents, uh, be, on the road accidents. Uh, we are self-funded. We're self-funded in our health insurance, but we're also self-funded in our, um, risk management, uh, which means that if there is some sort of, you know, accident that occurs on the road, we don't have an insurance policy, um, that covers that. We cover that through our risk management fund. And again, um, the other funds contribute to risk management, um, to provide that funding when we need it. So, um, and then there was, I believe, five hundred that was mentioned from contingency. Um, the amount that's in contingency for the general fund is specific to the, uh, fire EMS, um, sort of strategic plan. Um, council did approve at the, uh, last meeting the inclusion of ten, um, positions in the fire department, that's sort of phase one of that plan. Um, that, um, funding that was set aside was in anticipation of us, um, having to provide all EMS service in the city. And so, um, is that the contingency that council was referring to for those positions in fire EMS?
Four, four points six million in the contingency, right?
Well, uh, also was-
Is that, is that right?
As far as contingency?
Total in the contingency.
Hmm, not as far as con- contingency funds that aren't already set aside.
How much is in the contingency fund? Or how much is being budgeted in there?
Well, it's budgeted for a specific purpose, though.
Is, is, is that where the fire EMS?
That is where the fire EMS money is.
And that's what, three million?
That's about three, that's over three million dollars, that's in, well, two million that's left in there now.
And what's the total amount budgeted for twenty twenty-four?
Well, we also include in that contingency, uh, category are the pay increases. There's a one percent COLA that's included in the budget.
I think that's already assumed. Is it four point six million?
Not that I would say is available.
Is it more? Well, well, once you break this, it, we just, this is our first time hearing it, so we're trying to figure it out as we speak. And, and this is the CFO's first time hearing these numbers. And so, I, can you break out, I, I, I don't know the total amount that's in contingency, but it's therefore a purpose.
It is.
Like the one percent, like the fire EMS and whatever else. And I think the question that the counselor is getting at, when you take all of those things out, what's left?
Um, well, the only amount that's, uh, le- that's left from a contingency standpoint is about a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
After you take all of those things out, that's committed.
That's committed, so to speak.
Yes. But...
Okay.
All right. See anything else? Madam Director?
Not, not at this time.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I need to-
Those funds can be replenished at any time, right?
Replenished from what?
Fund balance, if needed.
Aren't we, aren't we using about ten million of fund balance?
Yes.
Right now?
Well, it's about nine point one million in fund balance that we're using right now, which is why we're at the hundred and nine days.
Yeah, and, and that leaves us like sixty-nine days in general fund, a reserve,
Yes.
and forty days in OLOS reserve.
Yes.
For a total of one hundred and nine days.
Okay. Your light's on. All right, Mayor Protem?
Thanks. Um, I, I like discussions about rolling back the millage when we can. Uh, I, I, I'm one counselor that didn't know about this. So I, there were, it was mentioned that there were discussions among some counselors, and I, I didn't know anything about it. So this is a surprise to me. I would like to continue the discussion, but, uh, if, we've gotta be prudent with the, the, the budget that we have. We, we have ten million dollars that we set aside for the pay study, you know, implement the pay plan. We actually spent about fourteen million.
No, sir, we, we spent close to twenty million.
We're close to twenty million, and we've gotta make sure that the funds are there to carry that pay plan forward. I would be glad to entertain something like this next budget cycle fiscal year twenty-five. But right now, I'm, I'm very concerned about where we are and where we're going with this being sprung on us at the last minute. Um, to be quite candid, some of us counselors have talked about trying to get information ahead of time so that we'll have time to digest it. And this is being thrown on us at, at this point, uh, in, in the year, in the meeting, and I didn't know anything about it. So I, I, I feel like some of us are being left out. Uh, and I, I, it concerns me with dialogue and the closeness that we have had over the years, and some of us are not being included in certain discussions. And I, I for one am, uh, concerned about that going forward. I would like to know, like to talk to anybody and find out what's going on, why we're handling it that way. I value your friendships, I value the camaraderie we've had, I look forward to working with you in the future on many issues, but it just concerns me when these things are sprung on the city at, at, at this time like this, especially for a counselor, and not that I'm anything, but at least as the mayor pro tem, something ought to be, should have been said to me. And I didn't get any calls about it. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Counselor Thomas?
Mr. City Manager, did you say, um, with, with this, um, action that, that, um, Counselor Davis has said, that we still have sixty days in the general fund and forty-nine days in the OLOS, um, fund balance?
Well, before, what I just heard tonight for the first time, I can tell you, coming into this meeting, we had a hundred, we have a hundred and nine days, sixty-nine in general, uh, fund, and forty in OLOS. That's before anything happened at this meeting tonight. And so, basi- uh, and so, it, it just, it depends on what happens tonight, whether-
But my question is, at this point, we have-
That's right.
Sixty-nine days in the general and forty in the OLOS.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, sure. I respect everybody's opinions on this, but if we truly balance the budget at two percent and it's balanced, that's the budget for twenty twenty-four. Everything that's being talked about here is already in that budget. Okay, that's, that's what we're approving, both on the operating and non-operating side. Now, if that's what we balance our budget, and somebody knew that the tax digest was gonna come in at twelve percent, which was after the fact, like I stated, then I have an issue with transparency. But it wasn't, because it was a surprise, and that's extra revenue that's coming in every year after this because of the increased valuations on properties. And everybody was in on those conversations, and we had them last week and the week before with the tax commissioner, I mean, excuse me, the, the tax assessor. So this is not a new subject, it was just after the process, we learned about it. We've never been in this position before, never. And then, and in the last three years, we've seen this gradual increase to this year, all of a sudden, a ten percent increase that each percent equates to almost a million dollars extra. That's what was told us. So I feel comfortable with the seven million and reducing the millage. And look, it's a start in the right direction, and in the future. I think if you make the case to the citizens, this is about management. And we've managed our budget at sixty days for how many years? How many years, Mr. City Manager? We have budgeted, we're at a hundred and nine, and this reduction will probably still be over a hundred, well at that ninety-day mark, which a lot of people would argue that we're holding too much money in the reserve on top of a contingency, which is really a double reserve or a double fund balance. You know, we do the same thing in our business, so I understand that. But what I'm saying is, this was a surprise to all of us that the tax digest went over. And the citizens had come before us and pleaded with us about their situations. I think this is a great gesture going in the right direction to say thank you, because the citizens have been so kind to give us these pennies. Mr. City Manager, where would we be without these pennies? Where would we be? So, I think this is a start, and we have the ability. Every year for the last three years, I went back. And we're not even talking about when's carryovers coming. We're not even talking about carryovers. Does anybody have an idea of the estimate on a carryover coming up? That could be eight to ten million dollars on the carryovers. That's more money in savings. So, I, I think the cushion is there. It's a matter of, we can just keep it and find something to do with it, or we can honor a, a great opportunity to thank the citizens. And I think it's a start, and we can look at this as we go. We can come back next year and see where we're at, and make adjustments then if we need to. And if you need to make the case that you need more money to operate the government, I think that can be done. But still, even if you win it, what is the issue going to eighty-nine, eighty-eight, eighty-seven, eighty-six days? That's a lot more than sixty. So, there is an extreme amount of conservatism in this budget. And we always do not spend, this budget is balanced at a hundred percent employment. Hundred percent employment. What are we running at employment right now? There's always salary savings. So, I, I'm comfortable, I mean, I can build my case on this. And, Mr. City Manager, if you don't wanna take it out of risk management or contingency, we'll just take it out of fund balance. You can have that option.
You can't take it out of, uh, risk management, because it's not-
Okay, we'll move, we'll move-
So, so, Mr. Mayor, if I may, whatever-
We'll move the, uh, five hundred to, out of contingencies, so it'll be four point five out of, oh, excuse me, four point five out of fund balance.
All right, Mr. City Manager, can we continue?
So, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things. Um, you know, every year, as you know, we are at the last hour getting, uh, the projected increase in the digest from the tax commissioner's office. Sometimes when we spring the budget forward to you in past, we still don't, we, we're, we're estimating a number. And, and we, we don't decide what that number is going to be. It comes out of the tax assessor's office. And so we use the number that we're provided, and literally, in May, that meeting in May, when you get the budget, sometimes we don't have the number. And so, um, and, and so we project, we project it two percent, is that right?
That's correct, but-
And, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, that is the process, the process that we follow in terms of the calendar and the scheduling, and when the notices go out. I mean, those are, um, in order to comply with the state law.
Exactly.
In terms of when those notices go out.
Yeah, that, that's fact. Uh, we're complying with state law, and, 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 and this process has not changed in the last twenty-five years.
No, and it's actually a little bit later than, uh, the last two years has been a little bit later than, um, prior years due to staffing challenges. I know that had, uh, that occurred in the tax assessor's office as well as the tax commissioner's office. Um, so even with this particular budget year, again, the second, the first installment is delayed. It's not October first, it's, uh, it's October fifteenth, uh, once you approve the, uh, millage ordinance. Um, again, because of the delays, um, that were sort of in the process, but still meeting those statutory requirements by state law. Uh, one thing I wanna make mention of, though, that I, um, it's just seemingly falling on, um, deaf ears here is that the increase that was, um, advertised in the paper is inclusive for the entire digest, which includes the TADS. The TAD funding that we receive from the tax commissioner's office, uh, we receive the city's portion as well as the school district's portion, that is in a restricted account. That is not for general operation, that's not to pay any person, that's not to give any raises or, or to buy any office supplies. It is strictly for the projects that have been included in, approved in that TAD.
Yeah, it, it, that is another conversation, but then, and I'll say this, Mayor, and I'll be done, but, look, um, I'm all for, if, if we've got the capacity to roll it back, we ought to do it. And, and, and I, I hear your calculations, Counselor Davis, but there has been no conversation with the CFO? No conversation?
And quite-
Oh, really? Don't need to be? Well- Well, and, and, uh, well, I think, I think when you're talking about something this significant, it's just my belief, in my experience as city manager, there needs to be a conversation with the city manager and the finance, the, the CFO.
Yep.
And, um, I, I don't know how you do it without that conversation, and I'll leave it at that.
Well, and just, only thing I'll add is, obviously, I, anytime we can reduce taxes, we can roll some back. We've, we've actually lowered it a little bit over the last five or six years, uh, reworking debt in the debt service and trying to make sure that we pass that on to the, to the taxpayers. Uh, the only thing I wanna mention, a couple of things, that made it sound like maybe we weren't transparent when we, when we included the two percent increase, um, and balanced the budget. That was before, um, the add delete and a couple of changes made at the eleventh hour. And, and that was about a, a little over four million dollars that had to come straight from fund balance. And when we talk about fund balance, I know when, when I got in office, and a lot of y'all that I talked to felt the same way, it looked bad, because we had more money in the OLOS slotted fund balance than we did in the general fund balance. And we got accused of propping up our fund balance reserves by using OLOS that should have gone to public safety. So we worked hard to get it back the other way, and we, we, we did have to work for years after that recession, in fact, below sixty days. And, and that's kind of what the fund balance is for, when you have a recession, you have an economic hardship, which, by the way, they're forecasting we have another one coming up this year with another, another recession. But the other thing I'll mention is, I don't know if anybody knew of the digest before it was presented to council. That's when I heard about it. Uh, and, and I think to, to make it sound like maybe we weren't transparent- Uh, and, and I think to, to make it sound like maybe we weren't transparent and sharing that might send the, so, the wrong, the wrong message. You know, whatever council decides to do with millage, uh, we're gonna support it, and we're gonna continue to try to provide the very best services that we can. Um, I, I, I agree in that, um, I, I wish there had been an earlier discussion so that we could have seen, even if we don't agree with them or we have some differing, uh, numbers, we could have laid those against what the, the, uh, Finance Director brought up and really strategically planned how to, how to do this. Because there's a lot of folks that through the valuation process got hammered. I mean, there's a number of people that got hit really hard. Uh, but, um, you know, the, the same year, I think the state is, uh, providing a $600 to $700, um, kind of rebate to, uh, homesteaders in Georgia. So if you own your home and you, it's, it's homestead, you're gonna get that on top, on top of it. Uh, so I, I mean, it's, it's, which it, it should, and I, and, but that's money out of our cash flow. I know they say we'll get it in 60 days, and I'm not doubting the state, but we have seen other instances where 60 days turned into a little bit longer, and that money's out of our cash flow process for, for quite a while. So I, listen, I'm never gonna, never gonna argue against lowering taxes, provided that we can continue to be prudent in how we move forward with providing the services that the citizens expect us to provide. I mean, there's still a lot of what-ifs out there. We're still dealing with what if we have to come up with a new way to deal with integrated waste? What if we have to pay another $8 million over two years just to pick up yard debris? Uh, you know, my biggest fear is that we turn around one day and we find ourselves in a similar situation that, that we were in in 2009. And that was a, that was not a good situation. So that's it. I just wanted to kind of add on the record. Councilor Davis? Okay. All right, that's all we got. We do have a motion and a second, I believe, don't we? Um, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim?
I stepped in the back and spoke with, uh, Suzanne, uh, the tax assessor, and I would like for her to come out and, and try to add some context to this. I'm all in favor of cutting taxes too, but at the same time, we are stewards of the tax dollar here. It's, it's our responsibility. And we've got to make sure that we are solvent going forward. If we're gonna have a recession, we've got to prepare for it. And all the indicators are that one's coming. And I, I just want to be careful moving forward and making sure that we're, we're, we're able, we're in good fiscal shape to carry the process forward of taking care of the citizens, doing what we're supposed to do, providing public safety and trash pickup and, and water. I mean, I, those are the es- essential things that we're supposed to do. And I would like to ask, um, Tax Assessor to come out and, and, and speak to some points that have been brought up today.
And. And while we're waiting on her.
Yeah, we've still got comments to the, to the motion. The counselor asked for some information. Yes, sir.
I just want everybody to understand, the charter gives this body the responsibility to approve the budget and to deal with it. We're the ones that have the ability to lower and raise the millage, and we do that with the responsibility of the citizens, understanding what we're confronted with. Being in an inflationary time makes it even better because we're giving the citizens relief. It may be a little bit, but we're giving them relief. The state's doing it. They're doing it for that very perf- purpose because people are struggling out there. It makes every sense if you've got extra money that you never anticipated. It makes sense to do that. We've got the ability to make the adjustments. And that's what this body's supposed to be doing. Each one of us is supposed to be delivering. And you've heard the conversations, though, don't, you know, I don't buy into the argument that you weren't included to the party. That's not true. This is a process that we go through, and now's the time to do it because we're getting information after we're, we're working on things and putting things together. That's okay. But as long as I've been on council, we balance the budgets at 2% increase almost every year, almost every year. And you know what? We've always made it, and we've always done good. And even at the times, even after the Great Recession, we made it through, we managed it 60 days, and a lot of this is about management. And it can be done. And so I, I feel like this is the right opportunity. You don't want to wait because then there's gonna be people, it's clear that you're kicking the can down the road. You know, and I'd rather get to the point to see where we're at, and I promise you, I'm gonna make that bet right now that we're gonna be quite okay and that the fund balance is gonna continue to grow. And by the way, if you haven't been keeping up with the economy, the feds will start making adjustments here soon to get us going in the opposite direction. So I think we've seen the worst. I think we bought them. We've already had recessions, by the way. We've already had two quarters of, uh, of, of non-growth. That's the definition of a recession. You hear the Fed talk about a soft landing. Everything's starting to respond now with a few more interest rates hikes to slow it down, and then it'll start turning back in the other direction. So I think we're out of the worst, but the citizens are feeling the cost of living increases. This helps them.
All right, thanks, sir.
I'm not gonna be allowed to speak.
This week, Suzanne here?
She's, she's.
Here she is.
Can I just say, though, I mean, I just would like to say before Suzanne approaches the, the microphone, in terms of the, the 2% that has been projected into, as far as the budget is concerned, that's because that's what we are seeing in actual collections. It's about a 2% increase that we're seeing in the monies that we receive from the tax commissioner's office, regardless of what is advertised in the paper in terms of the, uh, increase to the digest. I mean, that's really sort of number one. And as you mentioned, you know, the job of the Federal Reserve is to curb inflation and to increase jobs. And so they've done that strategically by increasing the, uh, the, the interest rates to slow down the spending. Well, if you have a slowdown in spending, what that means for us is that we're gonna have a slowdown in some of the revenue sources that we rely on, particularly the sales tax. When we, uh, go out to borrow money, which we'll be going out to borrow money, the rest of the money for the judicial building here soon, when we go out to borrow money, what the credit rating agencies look at in terms of our credit worthiness is the, the amount of our reserves. Has it increased? Has it stayed the same? If it has gone down, is that strategic? There are so many questions that they ask us in these rating reviews that we go through when we go out to borrow money. And, and I would say, from their standpoint, one of the most volatile things that they have for us in terms of our revenue sources is the sales tax. Sales tax is a volatile revenue source. If there was anything that they do get us on is that we rely too heavily on our sales tax as a revenue source.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Wheaton? Suzanne? Do you have questions, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, I would like for, for you to basically kind of go back over what you presented to us last week. I think you talked about, uh, uh, what your gross collections were or anticipations as far as, I think it was 11 or percent or so.
Right, so, so I set the value, okay? That's, that's my job, is, is to set the value of all real and personal property located within the boundaries of Muskogee County. And as an example, last year, we did an increase. And it equated to a seven and a quarter net increase in the digest. The, the, the amount of money available to be potentially taxed. And that equated to only a 2%, that seven and a quarter percent increase in the overall digest equated to only, it was, I think, slightly under a 2% increase in actual revenue to, to the, to the fund, to the balance that was available. Now, this year, our net digest increase is right around 12 and a half, 13%, somewhere in the, in that neighborhood. Out of that net, we'll call it 13%, out of that net amount, 25% of it is TAD increase. I just sat in the back and calculated that. 25% of that increase is for the TADs. That's untouchable. That goes to a whole separate account for investment. They can't, I mean, Angelica will come out, the, the CFO, she'll come out and she'll tell you that we can't touch those dollars. They're not available. So, and unfortunately, the way we do our calculations, that amount is in that net digest. So it looks like there's this, this bigger increase than, than what's there. Is that an increase in the, in the digest? Yes, it is. But it's not an increase necessarily to what's available to pay for all the services that we get here in the city. Um, we also have appeals that are coming in. We have value in dispute. I can tell you right now, we're, we're over $16 million value in dispute. Now, when I say 16 million, that doesn't seem like a whole lot, but 16 million, that's 16 million assessed dollars, not fair market, that's assessed. Divide that by 40%, and you'll find out what the fair market value is that's, that's actually a value in dispute. This is 16 million that would potentially be, you know, calculated into, into tax revenue. So I am not a fan of taxes. I'm not a fan of tax exemptions. Um, personally, if it was up to me and I had my way, there wouldn't be a single exemption available to anybody. It'd make my life a whole lot easier. But we have them. They're available. And our frozen homesteads, as an example, the amount of value that is exempted from last year to this year is over $500 million increase as far as what's exempted. That's, what that means is that is the change in value between what a property is frozen at, that's their, that's the lo- what we call the local value. That's their, that's their taxable value versus what their fair market value is. That difference in those, that's the exempted amount, and that increased over $500 million this year. So when we talk about this increase to digest, that doesn't mean that there's a huge increase to revenue collection. And I try and stay out of the tax world. I have an, I have my own hands full staying in my own lane with, with valuations. But it's, it's important to understand how my valuations affect what you, the decision that you all get to make. Um, and so it's, you know, I don't know if you have any other questions, but, but that's kind of what my digest means as far as, as far as collections and, and the decision you get to make.
Well, I wanted you to go back to the, the 12%, and you say a quarter of, 25% of that is TAD. So that knocks it down to, let's say, eight.
Mm-hmm.
And so out of that eight remaining, how much of that is under appeal? And how much do you think will, will, I guess, will the city will be able to rely on out of that?
So we expect, we expect 3% of that to be value in dispute. So out of that 8%, you're now down to five, and that takes us down to sort of the same numbers we had last year.
That was the point that I wanted to drive home, was that we're, we're really where we are, and we, we're not sure. Uh, hope's just not a good strategy. Hoping that the recession's not gonna come and hoping we're gonna do better, uh, it is not, not a good strategy for the citizens of Columbus, in my opinion. Uh, and I'm, I'm through with my life, so. I think Counselor Crabbe is next.
Thank you. So are TADs calculated on a percentage of, of collected? How are, you're saying it's 20, 25% goes to the TAD, so it's a percentage of what's collected?
So what, what I did was I calculated, um, how much the TAD had increased, the, the value that the TAD had increased from last year to this year, and I calculated what percentage of that increase was part of the overall increase, and that's where that 25% number comes from. That, the increase in the TAD represents 25% of the overall increase to the digest.
So the TADs are not a percentage?
I don't.
How do we know how much money or, is going into the TADs?
So that would be a calculation for the Chief Financial Officer. We have a base value that is, that is set as far as what.
That's right, okay.
As far as what, um, can be collected for the general fund, correct me if I'm wrong? Um, and then the, the difference, that increase in value is what goes towards the TAD fund.
So if we, if we, um, reduce the millage, the amount, the same amount is, would go into the TAD funds because it's based on the amount over the basis?
No, not exactly.
Okay.
So if you reduce the millage, the millage is the rate that you are multiplying by. So the, if that rate is lower, then that equates to be a lower number in revenue. Now, the base value remains the same, but the revenue that we actually receive and the revenue that actually goes into the TAD would be lower because the, the multiplier is lower.
Okay, and then, um, Counselor Davis had asked about the carryover and how much would be going back, coming back, and you never answered that question.
I'm not sure I understand the, the question in terms of the carryover.
Mm-hmm. From my understanding, it was how much of, how much mu- funds are, once we're done with this fiscal year, how much funds get carried over to the next year that we, that we did not use?
Well, um, we did an estimate in terms of, um, the, what we think we will end FY '23 in terms of reserves. And give me just a second, let me pull that up. So we anticipate we'll end FY '23 with about 129 days, which is a little lower than, um, where we ended FY '22. Uh, FY '22 was about 132 days. So when we're looking at, um, what the fund balance reserves would be for the upcoming fiscal year, we do take into consideration those things that, um, occur within the fiscal year. There was, there were millions of dollars that were added to, to the budget, to the adopted budget as part of the mid-year budget to take care of some of those capital needs, the capital outlay, particularly for public safety, some for general government, um, some capital improvement projects, um, that were included in the budget. So we do take a look at that, and we do take, uh, into consideration any salary savings that we'll have rolling over, rolling into the reserves at the end of this year. One thing I'd like to make mention of, uh, I think it was Counselor Davis that said that we're 100% funded in terms of staffing, and that's not necessarily the case. Um, part of the, um, part of the plan to fund above and beyond required us to reallocate some budget dollars within the, uh, public safety departments to, um, implement the, the, the pay, um, plan at, at, at an above and beyond level. And so, um, included in the FY '24 budget, there are about 52 police officer positions that are unfunded. That's not, that's, so the money for 52 positions are not in the budget.
But we didn't need it because they're not there?
Well.
They're not drawing a salary.
And so we, we're, we're repurposing the money that would have been budgeted for those positions to pay for the people that are here, drawing those salaries.
So what you're saying is if we wouldn't have done those expenditures, if we wouldn't have done that, then there would have been more than the 20-day carryover because we, you're saying that we're at 109 at the beginning of this meeting, and you're saying that you anticipated that it would be 129 days with the carryover. So we're talking 20 days is, and so you're saying if we didn't have those expenditures that you just listed, then it could have been, you know, 139 or 149 or something like that.
Could have been.
But we used up some of, uh, we used up some of the carryover dollars, and we still have 20-day, you're, you're anticipating that we have 20 days, um, of carryover?
20 days that we're using in between fiscal years. So it's a, it's a little, um, the timing is off, obviously, because we are, uh, ending FY '23 as of Friday, and then we'll sort of get into reconciling all the expenses for FY '23. Um, but while we're also reconciling and anticipating where we'll end up in FY '23, we have to also take into consideration those things that we're using, um, in terms of. we have to also take into consideration those things that we're using in terms of, of the next year. Part of the difference in the days too, is that, is that the value of a day is more. So for FY twenty-three, the value of a day was five hundred and seventy thousand, whereas the value of a day for FY twenty-four is over six hundred thousand. And that's because our expenses have increased, particularly for personnel, and those personnel-related costs.
Okay, so I'm going to restate my question, because now, now you, you, at the beginning, you said that you're, you calculated and you anticipate that it was going to be a hundred and twenty-nine days. And then you started talking about additional costs and everything. So have those been calculated? Is that part of that anticipation? And so after all of that, we're still going to receive twenty days of carryover?
It's the twenty days of carryover that's really throwing me off.
Well, I don't know how, I don't know how to say it. When you're done with the, when you're done with this year's budget, you're going to have some funds left that you did not spend. What is that amount?
We anticipate that'll be about a hundred and twenty-nine days valued at five hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
And, so that's additional days, is that twenty days over the one oh nine that we have right now? Or is that a hundred and twenty-nine days over the one oh nine we have right now?
So the one oh nine that we have anticipates the, the money that we, where we'll end up for FY twenty-three, that is already calculated and factored into the one oh nine that we have for FY twenty-four.
So we're talking about twenty days?
There's a twenty-day difference between where we anticipate we'll end up for FY twenty-three and where we anticipate we're starting, where we'll end up, I should say, for FY twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, I think we've got to like, the answer to the question.
Okay, Counselor Davis?
Yeah, let me just say, last year, I think it was anticipated that the tax digest came in at seven, eight percent, right? Is that right? Isn't that what was said earlier?
Yeah, it was, it was a, it was a seven, it was a seven and a quarter percent increase, and that increase.
And that's what it came in at.
Well, that's, that's.
At the end of the day, what it come in at.
What do you mean, what did it?
Seven or eight percent, or less.
No, we collected somewhere in the neighborhood of two percent.
We budgeted for two percent.
The increase in, the increase in collections last year was, what, two percent increase?
For FY twenty-two, it was.
We, we budgeted at two percent.
Well, but we, in terms of revenue that we receive from the Tax Commissioner's Office, it's about two percent.
Well.
Increase.
If, if you notice, based on the twelve percent that we were told the tax digest came in, and I think I asked a question about what a percent equals, and it's somewhere close to a million dollars. Even with the reduction, you got three million, that's thirty percent still to play with in that number. And then the fund balance, and then addition of the carryovers, and then an addition of the savings once again. And then if you go back and look at the last three years of projected and, and actual, the increases just continue to come. And so, I don't have any problem putting money down on the table, knowing that it's going to continue at that pace. And we've got this opportunity to do something for the citizens, and then we can look at it as we move forward. If we move forward and it continues to come in at that pace, we can do some more. We can do some more. But we've made this commitment, and I've made this promise many years. If we ever were able to handle and take care of salary increases for the employees, balance the retirement and the healthcare fund, which we have, then we could look at reducing the millage. And that's been my commitment to the citizens, and I've tried to do this over the years, and I've always told them that we can't do it. Because we've been right at the sixty-day, and even telling sixty-day mark, and even telling the employee, employees, that I value your healthcare and your retirement versus being able to do something in a salary increase. We've been able to do those things on top of where we're at right now. So, I feel good about it, and it's a responsibility of each council member to understand these things and, and to know that. And just because you don't have a conversation about it, I mean, here's where we're at. It's the reality, it's part of the process, and this is the time to do it. Or either you kick the can down the road, and then you tell everybody you're going to come back and look at it again. You know, I think now's the perfect time. Last week, I said I needed to look at the numbers because I couldn't cherry pick. I went back, spent a whole week looking at this, and trying to understand it, and I feel comfortable about it. And, you know, we can, I don't expect anything from management, anything less, saying that we have challenges. I hear it in my business all the time. But we set the budgets, and we give it to the managers, and they implement it. And we've done that, and y'all have done a good job at that, and I trust that you will continue to do that, and I have confidence that you can do that. That's why I can speak, that I feel good about rolling the millage back for the citizens of Columbus, and giving them a little bit more because their water bill, they're going to come in here soon, and they're going to increase the water bill again. And electricity's going up and everything, I mean, we've talked, people getting kicked out of their homes because of rent. Any little thing we can do, I think the citizens will be grateful, along the governor's recognizing it, the state's recognizing it. And you know what, if you can make the case to the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, that you need to raise the millage, if you can make that case, I think they'll buy into it. I really believe that. And I don't buy into what I've heard around this table, that, oh, you don't ever want to roll it back, if you roll it back, you'll never get it back up. I don't buy into that.
Well, you may be making that case.
Well.
I mean, honestly, because.
You know, everything's projected, but right now, we balance the budget on two percent increase, and we're, we're there.
Counselor Thomas?
When we started the budget process this year, we were told that there were a hundred and eighteen days in the fund balance. That's the combination of the general fund and the Olaf's fund balance. And that equals seventy million, eight hundred and sixty thousand, sixty-two dollars. When we got through with the add-delete list, we were told that we had a hundred and nine days left in those two fund balances. That equals sixty-five million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars. In the thirteen years that I have been on council, there have been many years that our fund balance was in the thirties. Not in the one hundreds, but in the thirties. And we finally got it up to sixty, which we were, have been told over and over and over again, that sixty is the number that we need to have in order to meet our obligations. And then we got it, we were told, we need ninety days because of the, that's the figure that when we sell bonds, the bond folks are looking at, is at least ninety days. And ninety days is fifty-four million, four hun, uh, forty-five thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. Now, Counselor Davis can talk to you all day long about all these other things that they've been talking about. I'm looking at the, at the ending balance. We have money in the ending balance to give our citizens a break on their millage rate. And if it happens, this is, you know, this is not just a few people who are upset. This is lots of people who are upset over this millage rate and over this tax bill. And I, for one, am going to support Counselor Davis's motion because I believe we are in a financial position at this point in time, and for the foreseeable future. And for the foreseeable future, that we will be able to meet our obligations, and we will still be able to give our citizens some relief on their tax bill. And so, that's, that's the position that I think we need to take a look at. All of this other stuff is well and good, but our citizens have said to us, and I'm, I'm probably not, don't think I'm the only one around the table that have had people call and say, what is going on with all of this? This is, this is, we're not going to be broke. And so I, I would move, I would say that I'm going to support Counselor Davis's motion to lower the millage rate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Thomas, for breaking down the seventy, whatever, million and sixty-five. And I was going to ask Finance Director to ensure that we mention the dollar amount when we're talking about the days, because a lot of people in the audience might not know what a day equates to. And if we're saying twenty days actually carryover or salary savings, it would be good to know the actual amount that, you know, we're discussing. And I also agree with you, I think we have some amazing city employees. Mr. Hughley and his team are going to do a good job for the citizens, and I think that they do need some relief. And this would be the right choice to decrease the millage. So, and that's why I'm supporting.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we're ready, I'm ready.
Mayor, well, we've got a few other councillors that want to be here. Mayor Protem?
I, I would like to ask if you could compute the, the number, how much would the rebate be for someone has a hundred thousand dollar home, and someone has a two hundred thousand dollar home? How much would that compute out to for them? Not rebate, but rollback, rollback. If you lower the millage rate, the amount, how much, what percentages would that equate to for, for each homeowner? I mean, I think we'd even know what the cost is. I, I like your evaluation much better than what was said earlier. I, I tend to see the justification in that, it's much clearer said. If you want to go to the others, that's fine.
We've got Counselor Begley coming next.
You can go to the others if you want, they'll come back in a minute.
Counselor, Counselor Begley, do you have a comment while we're waiting on the tabulation there?
I, I mean, I, I do try to be consistent, I feel like last time we said no to a lot of parks and recs requests on the idea that we don't have enough money. And so now, if the position is, we have too much money, if that's our new position, I feel like there's worth revisiting the parks and recs request that we denied. Putting money into the courts to reduce the jail backlog, there's the fire EMS contingency, the integrated waste. So I feel like there's lots of areas that need cash. So if, if we're not changing our position from, we don't have cash to fund these, to we have too much cash, I would prefer to revisit those areas and try to invest in our parks and recs, like we said we wanted to, and put more money into the courts to reduce the backlog, which I think has a positive ROI in the first, in the long run. And so that's why I'm okay with the budget as presented before the, the millage rate change.
Okay, thank you, sir. Who have the calculations?
Some quick math here. So that, I think it was a seven million dollar usage of reserves, or five million dollars out of general fund, and I think it was two million out of indigent care. That equates to about one point four four meals. So in Urban Service District One, on a home valued at two hundred thousand, which is the average value of a home in Urban, Urban Service District One, the difference in what they would pay from a taxation standpoint is about sixty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents, so about seventy dollars on the annual tax bill for Urban Service District One. And for Urban Service District Two, the average homestead is about three hundred and seventy-five thousand, and that amounts to about a hundred and seventy dollars reduction.
Okay, thank you. All right, don't appear be any more questions, so we have a motion on the floor in a second. Are there, is there any other discussion? All in favor, please?
Can we get the specifics? I've heard seven million as a total, but are there millage rate equivalents that we can also put in the record?
If that seven million dollar number is where we're going, that equates to being about one point zero three meals out of the general services millage, and about point four one meals out of indigent care.
I thought he's, I thought it was point seven five, I missed something. Counselor Davis?
I thought it was seven million dollars.
I know we talked about the dollars being equally spread out, but is it a way to equally spread it out to every household?
Well, if you reduce the millage, every person, whether they have a homesteaded property or not, would receive a reduction because the multiplier is lower.
Yeah, every household's going to be different with different homestead exemptions for elderly, veterans. You name, you name it, there's a bunch of them, but she's saying they'll approximate seventy dollars on a two hundred thousand dollar home in Urban Service District One, and it's at a hundred and seventy dollars in Urban Service District Two. It'll approximate that, it may not be that exactly, because everybody's got these different factors.
If Council Island doesn't support it, can we put two in one and four?
No.
No, you gotta, you gotta do a lump sum.
That's his district.
You gotta do a lump sum and break it out across the districts.
Okay.
All right, well, first, I need to hear the, the motion as it was stated, so the motion is tied to a dollar amount? Oh, okay. All right, Mayor Protem?
Amendment to the motion, based on the discussion we just had, can we do it for every, equal amount for everybody? So what if we approach it in a dollar amount? And just say, let's reduce everybody's, all the property owners by a hundred dollars, give them a hundred dollar credit, or however we're going to couch that. Instead of sixty-nine for, seventy for some, and a hundred and seventy for others, we just do a halfway point and say, let's treat everybody the same, give them a hundred dollars off.
Well, that's still, I mean, you could, but for the people who don't pay taxes, they would receive no credit, obviously.
I mean, from a dollar amount, though, I, I can't exactly say what that would be.
Well, here's, here's the thing, are you talking about every taxable account? Because you have seventy thousand, seven hundred and some odd parcels of real property that are taxable, and then you have something in the neighborhood of six thousand personal property accounts that are taxable. So are you, are you wanting to, to do a flat figure on every single account? Or is it just on real property, or is it just on residential real property? There's a lot of different possibilities there.
But what would the answer to your question be if we, if we instituted what was proposed originally? It would cover all the same, wouldn't it? It would be the.
It would, it would apply to, to every single, to every single account.
Then that's what, that's what I was trying to address.
Does change the calculus.
If we're trying to reach all of them, then it would be fair to, to reach all of them.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's going to be, you know, when you, when you talk about that many accounts, and, you know, you're talking about, what, seven million? So you can take that, you can take that seven million.
It's, it's the, it's the assessment times forty percent minus, if you've got homestead exemption, thirteen-five, then you multiply it by point zero four one. That should give you your taxes, but what, what concerns me is, for example, I, I had a discussion with a gentleman today that is one of the largest payers of property tax in, in the community. So he has a, so each one of his properties is a separate account, right? Because, I mean, this guy pays in the hundreds of thousands of dollars more under the new valuation. And you give him a hundred bucks.
Yeah, it'll be a hundred bucks.
It might be a hundred on one property.
Okay.
It might be sixty on another. Because if you, that's what I'm saying, if you look at the, if you look at the formula.
Yeah. I, I was just going based on one hundred dollars across the board for every account, I think, is what I was thinking.
Well, you're right, because, um, reducing the millage is based on a percentage, um, as opposed to a flat dollar amount. So if you do, uh, have, uh, property that are, that's valued more than others, then you will get a greater percentage. I mean, you'll get a greater reduction because of the percentage.
Percentage of the bigger piece.
Of a bigger piece of pie, right.
Madam CFO, what if we approach it as a credit on their tax instead of rollback millage?
I mean, I, I think that it's hard to say, to be quite honest, without knowing all of the factors in terms of what's taxable, what's not taxable, that kind of thing. Um, if we just base it off of seventy thousand parcels, right? We have like seventy-two and some change. If we base it off of seventy at a hundred dollars per credit, that'd be seven million dollars. Seventy-six, five, seventy-eight taxable accounts. And if every one of those.
Mr. Mayor, this is.
And that, that doesn't include the people that are paying zero taxes, though, right?
No, maybe it doesn't, but I think they're trying to, trying to gather the data.
This count includes the people who are paying zero taxes.
Okay.
This is just how many, because they, they still get notices and they still have a taxable value, but they have an exemption as a result of their frozen homestead or their disabled veterans or their surviving spouses of peace officers killed in the line of duty.
And how many is it? About, about six thousand of those?
That are tax exempt.
That are tax exempt.
Um, yeah, we have approximately, um.
Yeah, no, I'm not gonna call you.
On a standard year, we have approximately.
Oh, but with the state, um, there's gonna be more. It's gonna be like thirteen thousand.
Yeah, so typically, there's, there's approximately fifty-two hundred, yeah, so, sorry. Um, typically, out of the taxable accounts, there's approximately fifty-two hundred or so who are exempt from taxes with the exception of bonds, because bonds are, they're, they always still have to pay those. But that's because of their homestead exemptions. There's about fifty-two hundred typically that don't pay any tax. This year with the tax relief grant that the, uh, that, the, the homestead tax relief grant of a, of an additional eighteen thousand dollars off of assessed value, that number's going to increase to approximately thirteen thousand, six hundred and fifty taxpayers will not be paying any taxes with the exception of, of, on their, uh, the bond amount, the bond portion of the millage rate, which is point zero eight three. And then you have, and, and all homesteaded taxpayers are going to get, if they are in, in Urban Service District Two, they're going to already see an additional six hundred and twelve dollars off of their taxes if they remain taxable. And then those who are in Urban Service District One will see an additional seven hundred and twenty off of their, off of their taxes. So that's a, that's a break that they're getting this year, um, because there's a, a budget surplus up in Atlanta. So they gotta pass that back.
Okay.
What you just described from the state, though, right?
Correct, correct, yeah. There's a, there's a budget surplus. They're allowed to collect more than, than they spend, so they have to give it back. And this is, this is their method of giving it back.
You mentioned fifty-two hundred exempt or exempt from taxes. Is that, is that of the seventy-two hundred parcels?
Of the seventy thousand, seven hundred and.
Seventy thousand?
Yes.
Okay, thirteen thousand.
We're talking real property.
Roughly thirteen thousand do not pay. Is that because of homestead?
Roughly this year, because of that additional grant, uh, roughly thirteen thousand, uh, six hundred and fifty will not be paying any taxes other than on that little bond portion of the millage.
So if we're, if we're talking real property, that's about seventy thousand, these again, real rough numbers, about seventy thousand real property accounts, taxable accounts. Um, about thirteen, six fifty of those, because of the state grant, won't qualify for any reduction in terms of what we do from a local standpoint. That leaves about fifty-six thousand, three fifty taxable accounts that, um, the hundred dollars would apply to. So that equates to about five point six millions.
Okay.
I got a.
All right, there is.
Comment, Mayor.
You have what?
Well, it goes to that point. I mean, do we have a second or not?
No, there's not, I'm not even sure we have a.
Yeah, I think you run the risk of violating, uh, the, what they call the uni- uniformity clause in the Georgia Constitution, because council sets the millage rates. You have authority to increase the millage rate every year or reduce it. And that is taxation as to value. You, you know, you don't have authority to grant flat increases, uh, from the General Assembly on Avalon Tax Bills. You can give people a credit on their business license fee, something like that, that you have total control over. But on this, I think you run the risk of violating uniformity. So I'd rather see you reduce the millage rate. And she has proposed, Ms. Alexander proposed the one point oh three mils general services and point forty-one out of indigent care. If you're gonna do it at all, do it that way.
Well, since there is no motion, um, we'll, uh, we'll call the vote. All in favor, please say aye. Would you, well, we understand that, but how, how much and how is it gonna be? Do what? Yeah, we, we oughta be able to restate the motion that you got. We've had a request from a counselor to try to understand what the.
And the way I understand the figure was seven million in total reduction, but you had proposed the one point oh three mils general services and point forty-one mils for indigent care.
That equates to about seven million dollars.
That, that equates to that roughly. It may not be to the penny, but roughly. Right, it'll have to go to item three and then we, the general operating budget will be affected by that amount.
All right. We good? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it passes. I think it's, I think it's Nick. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
Yeah.
Oh, that was. Okay, all right.
Let's get a, let's get a vote on the entire operating budget with the seven million dollar reduction and the two additions made by Counselor Thomas.
All right, we'll need a motion to approve that then.
No, it's.
Well, no, we.
Just item one right now.
All right. All right, is there a motion to approve as amended? All right, is motion second approve as amended? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And now I recommend on item three, the actual millage rate ordinance, that you use the numbers provided by our Finance Director, the one point oh three reduction for general services and point forty-one for indigent care.
Motion second approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I?
Hold on, hold on before we vote on that one. Can she comment or?
Well, no, I just wanna, um, I'm gonna have to come back. If you give me just a few minutes to revise what the operating budget numbers are for the, for item number one that was approved. Because there will be a change to the budget, um, to the amount for the indigent care fund.
Right, we know those amounts are gonna change.
Yeah, okay.
Definitely. And then the same in number three. Will change by one point oh three mils and point forty-one. Okay, now I think we can move on to item two. This is the non-operating budgets.
All right, is there a motion to approve item two, the non-operating? We already have the motion second? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Okay, it's Counselor Garrett also voting. All right, item two is passed. Well, let's do item four by itself. This is the school millage, if we can, twenty-three point three two one mils.
All right, there's a motion in a second to approve item four. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? It's approved.
All right. Now we've got, uh, pay plan implementation amendments effective July one. Um, if we could get a vote on number five.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye. Any, any discretion? You, you have. Okay. To your motion.
This is twenty twenty-four, and this does include the maintenance of the plan for twenty twenty-four, right, coming out of twenty-three? Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll call that question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That was item five that passed. Item six, a personal transportation vehicles, which has been discussed with the accompanying map, is ready for adoption.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed?
No.
All right, um, all in favor, raise your right hand.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and Counselor Garrett's voting.
All opposed.
In favor, that's nine to one.
All right, motion second to approve. Any discussion?
That's Midland Commons Entertainment District.
All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? It's approved. Okay. All right, there's a motion in a second to, uh, approve items eight, nine, and ten. Anybody want one of those pulled? Huh? Yes, we can. So, uh, there's a motion, a second for item eight and nine. We can vote on those two. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Miss City Attorney, would you go over ten?
Yeah, item ten is, um, simply a request that the Development Authority provide counsel with an update on their activities every hundred and twenty days to include tax abatements or incentives approved, approved during that period. Number two, Muskogee County Board of Tax Assessors will send a notice to council through the clerk of council whenever it approves a tax abatement for a development authority project. And three, that clerk of council will provide a copy of this resolution to the Secretary of the Development Authority and the Board of Tax Assessors.
Well, there's, we, Counselor Begley?
For, for number one, I, to me specifying a hundred and twenty just seems like overkill. Every time we've ever asked them to come speak, they've come to speak to us, um, and they, they did a great job. And so I, I don't understand why we just don't include them, uh, their minutes. We approve their minutes. They've got open meetings. Um, and so I don't wanna get in a position where we're like, there's a gotcha, like, hey, you weren't here a hundred and twenty days because of the schedule or for whatever reason. Uh, especially when, I think they've been very accommodating to speak to us anytime we've asked them to.
Well, and I, we can do that administratively, just by bringing them in here every sixty or ninety days or however often council wants, because it's a resolution, doesn't carry the weight of law. It's not an ordinance anyway, so we could, we can just arrange for them to come on a regular basis and walk through all the activity that's going on through the Development Authority and, um, try to make sure council stays briefed. Or not. There's a motion in a second to approve item ten. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Okay, I've got one.
You have one, no? Okay.
Okay, that passes nine to one. Ms. Clerk?
All right.
Okay, and then, Mayor, we need a short executive session on litigation, and that's all we have.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move into the public agenda, and as a reminder, everybody will have five minutes. You can start off with stating your name, and, um, we will give you an additional three minutes after the clerk's agenda if you're unable to complete your discussion in the, uh, in the allotted time. First is Mr. Jack Rosenhammer, representing Columbus Street Hockey, to discuss a new street hockey program for kids. We're not, I'm staying.
We have a great program. Listen, if you guys have any extra money, I know some guys that could definitely use it, put it to use. So we're gonna talk about something that provides value to the taxpayer and will cost them absolutely nothing, so. My name is Jack Rosenhammer. I reside at nineteen oh two Thirteenth Street. I'm here with my colleagues, Chris Poirier and Jeremy Delaney, our other colleague. David Hartle can't be here right now. Thank you, Mayor Henderson, Mr. Hughley, and counselors, for giving me another five minutes to talk to you about a subject I'm just a little passionate about. I originally planned on using my now four minutes and forty-one seconds to give you all a verbal update of what we have going on with Columbus Street Hockey and what we've been doing over the last few months. But due to some recent and fast-moving events, I'm assuring this conversation. I'm assuring the conversation on where we were and focus more on where we are going. Columbus Street Hockey started as a conversation between myself, Jeremy, and our other partner, David. We started bouncing the idea around of a hockey-specific training facility, complete with a ball hockey rink, a synthetic ice rink, a gym, turf training area, pro shop. More on all that later. Realizing our ultimate vision was many years, dollars, and collaborations into the future, we decided to act on something that we could control in the short term, starting a street hockey program. Being unfamiliar with the nonprofit space, we brought on Columbus Got Game founder, Chris Poirier, who helped guide us through the often complex environment of obtaining nonprofit status, applying for grants, raising funds, and managing the requirements to be in good standing with both the state and federal government. Our intent was to lower the two most prominent barriers for entry to hockey, cost and access. To address these barriers, we settled on holding free pop-up events. I emailed you all about those, all throughout, all throughout the city of Columbus and Fort Moore. We visited many public parks and recreation centers with our traveling band of followers, bringing hockey and good times to all those who wanted to play. Our proudest moments were when local children, who just happened to be passing by us on their bikes or on foot, would ask us if they could play. Our unequivocal answer was always yes, because hockey is for everyone. We followed up these three events with a summer hockey league that kicked off this past Saturday at Frank Chester Recreation Center. Fifty-six children, including three that are sitting back over there. We'll plan our league over the next five weekends and further grow the hockey footprint in Columbus. In addition to our internal program, we also partnered with the UpStar Collaborative Community Connection, bringing free activities at Frank Chester Rec Center for anyone, young or old, to participate in. We've also brought hockey to Brewer Elementary School Summer Camp in conjunction with the United Way of, of the Chattahoochee Valley. Our story is a testament to what could, to what good can be done when people come together, bury their egos, and share their resources for the common good. To get started, we borrowed hockey sticks and street hockey balls from the Columbus Hockey Association's Orin Hergot and our friend Glenn Cunningham, Director of the LaGrange Hockey Program. Uh, more, more street hockey balls were donated by the local hockey store, Dragons Zen Pro Shop, and nets were purchased by Chris and Columbus Got Game. Office and storage space were made available to us at the Ranger Outreach Center, thanks to Director Tony Main. Our logo was designed and produced by Rich Bates and Jeffrey Krup of Ignite Sports and Entertainment. Eli Wilson and Holly Browder of the Parks and Rec Department help us secure our playing locations. Many Columbus River Dragons players and coaches have come out to help coach at our free pop-up events. Cold Gatorade and water are delivered each and every week to keep our kids hydrated, thanks to Christian, thanks to Christian Schwem and the Buffalo Rock Company. The majority of our coaches come from the Chattahoochee Valley Warriors Hockey Team, a program dedicated to providing healthy, dedicated to providing healing through hockey, through hockey to service members and first responders. Our league shirts were provided by Flip Weaver and the Jersey Shop. Finally, our league champions will earn the right to lift the Sasser Cup, sponsored by Columbus River Dragons super fans Danny and Beth Sasser. It is incre- it is incredible what good can be done when people come together, bury their egos, and share their resources for the common good. This all leads me to make two announcements that will undoubtedly alter the course of outdoor rec hockey in Columbus. First, Columbus Street Hockey has been approved as a partner to the NHL Street Program, a program sponsored by the National Hockey League that will help us bring more hockey to more kids in our community. Now, why is this significant? It's significant as we are one of the first programs outside the original seven pilot cities this summer to have a program. These cities include Boston, Chicago, Pittsburgh, Austin, Texas. These cities include Boston, Chicago, Pittsburgh, Austin, Texas, and traditional hockey hoppegs that are closer to Councilman Kogle's heart, Winnipeg, Edmonton, and Vancouver. That's right, the seven original cities and Columbus, Georgia are the first eight programs to have NHL Street. The second reason why this is significant is because the company that this program is run through is headquartered in Atlanta, Georgia. We will be the first program in the state of Georgia to have this program. The second announcement is that Columbus Street Hockey has recently entered a partnership with EMP Power Play Project, a program that will bring outdoor ball, bring an outdoor ball hockey rink to our city. EMP is a nonprofit organization whose sole mission is educating, motivating, and ultimately empowering kids through the participation of sports. The program donates, that's right, I said donates with a capital D, fully-built ball hockey rings to programs who need them to help grow the game. Columbus is not a new name to EMP Power Play, as they are currently constructing a ball hockey facility fifty miles north of us in LaGrange with our dear friend Glenn. As we move forward this endeavor, we anticipate working with the council and necessary city government departments to locate and secure the land needed to construct such a facility for the people of Columbus to enjoy. I'd like to thank you for your time once again, and look forward to working with each and every one of you as you help grow the sport.
Jack, that's as good a job as anybody's done going right down to the last second.
Professional office.
You can breathe now. Hey, listen, I got to tell you, man, you guys are doing an incredible job. It's so much fun to watch kids that have never been exposed to that, that sport take to it. So, just thank y'all for what you're doing. Counselor Thomas?
Ms. Run, did you say that we have some of the street hockey players in the audience tonight?
Yes.
If they feel comfortable, could they come up to the mic and introduce themselves?
Come on, Audrey. Matthew, come on, Audrey. Okay. They're like enforcers.
My name is Ashley Contrato.
My name is Lena Contrato.
My name's Audrey May.
Did you guys like playing hockey?
Good, good.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenhammer.
Thank you.
Counselor Huff?
Thank you, sir, always, when I see you. You have upcoming dates, anything else going on this summer?
Yes, sir. So, every Saturday from, this upcoming Saturday through July twenty-ninth, we have our street hockey league that I was talking about. That's at Frank Chester.
That's going to be at Frank Chester.
That's every Saturday from ten to eleven a.m.
Okay, ten to eleven, that's how I missed you last time. I think I rolled into about eleven forty-five, twelve.
Yes, sir.
I was at Girls Inc. this past weekend.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, for their celebration there. They had an alumnus program, so I'll come by.
Absolutely.
It'll be every Saturday from now to the twenty.
July twenty-ninth, that's.
Okay, thank you.
And then after that, we plan on having more of our free pop-up events. We've got a plan after this league.
Okay, yeah, I was that close to you. I was right around the corner.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kogle?
I was at Eddie Middle School today, talking about Career Day, and gave the students a little talk on following your dream, and if you have an idea, to roll with it. And it's been really pretty incredible in the last probably twelve to eighteen months to watch this organization go from like five kids on the hockey rink to, for, I mean, for, for me, for women's sports, to watch the girls' hockey night or, or day, learn to skate, blossom to about sixty, sixty girls on the, on the rink. And then to come down to Frank Chester and, sorry, Bruce, I, I came, I came in Eastern Standard Time, so. And to, to, to see, you know, forty to fifty kids on, on the tennis courts. It is an incredible thing that the ball is rolling, no pun intended, in the right direction. And I can't wait to see, you know, hundreds of kids out on all courts across, across Columbus. It's the new pickleball, Glenn.
All right, I think that's it.
Yeah, I think it would be better with the Columbus Fire, with the Fire and Police Games that have a hockey game, so, just saying.
It'll work, it'll work. Hey, listen, thanks again for, for everything that you guys are doing. We're excited about the program, and I know they are.
Awesome. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Next is Ms. Teresa Elamine, representing the Southern Anti-Racism Network regarding evictions and affordable housing. I saw Ms. Elamine. Okay, well, I hope she enjoys her birthday. All right, next is Mr. Jeremy Frady, regarding noise ordinance within residential areas pertaining to business dumpsters being emptied before seven, and a potential new ordinance establishing a stronger penalties for repeat offenders. Ms. Frady, you have five minutes. You can just start by, by saying your name, and then you can go from there.
My name is Jeremy Frady. I'm at twenty-one fifteen Rosemont Drive in District Eight. Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here this evening and look forward to hearing the council's opinion and advice. For years, my spouse and I have complained of noise ordinance violations in the St. Francis area. I'm here this evening to give a brief overview of my personal experience and to plead for some assistance and additional guidelines regarding noise ordinances in our city. Since October of twenty-twenty-two, my spouse has been in communication with code enforcement regarding these noise ordinance violations at Rosemont and Woodruff Road area. Advanced disposal was cited by Code Enforcement Officer Thompson for one location, the Columbus Family Dentistry. Advanced disposal paid the citation, and since then, the emails and pleas have continued between the two of us to prevent advanced disposal from emptying dumpsters around five-thirty a.m. every Tuesday. We've been assigned a new code enforcement officer, Officer Ramirez, after another violation on April twenty-seventh. It took over a month for Ramirez to issue a citation. He asked for evidence from us, which we provided. He asked for our truck numbers, driver's names, et cetera. He encouraged us to document these violations, which resulted in advanced disposal calling the police on us for following his truck four hundred feet in normal traffic within our own neighborhood. Then Ramirez claimed advanced disposal would not be cited because they are not breaking ordinance due to this ordinance he quoted. Special noise sources, trucks. No person shall load any garbage trash or compactor truck, or any truck whereby the loading, unloading, or handling of boxes, crates, equipment, and other objects is conducted within a residential district or within three hundred feet of any hotel or motel between the hours of ten p.m. and seven a.m. The code clearly states that the three hundred-foot stipulation is regarding hotels and motels, not homes. I reached out to Director of Code Enforcement, Ryan Pruitt, and he instructed Officer Ramirez to issue a citation. In between that citation and our court date, there was an additional three violations, all documented, all reported to code enforcement, and none were cited. Since beginning to document these complaints, there have been roughly thirty occurrences, but only one citation. Just today at five-thirty a.m., they emptied the dumpsters at the Rosemont Shopping Plaza and the church at Hilton and Warm Springs Road. I'm here to suggest a few things that could possibly help these ordinance be enforced. If we had a clear execution guidelines when enforcing a broken ordinance, the procedures for code enforcement when citing a violation should be available to citizens to know what to expect when filing a complaint. Not only would this explain the process to the citizens, but it would hold code enforcement accountable for enforcing these ordinances. Citations issued after each violation with increased fines. This would hopefully help whoever's being cited understand that they need to follow these ordinances and will be held accountable every time, not one time out of ten or twenty violations. Increased fines for broken ordinances within neighborhoods and residential districts. A fine of a hundred and fifty dollars is not enough of a deterrent to a large company such as Waste Management. This fine should be increased for this first citation and higher if you have violated this ordinance in other locations. If we had citations issued regarding neighborhoods and residential areas and not just a specific property, this would have, if violators are cited for a broad area, the citation process would be more efficient. Such as, once advanced disposal was cited in our neighborhood, it was at the dentist office on Rosemont Drive and Woodruff. They continue to violate the ordinance directly across the street from that. They currently emptied five dumpsters in my area, and at the rate we're headed, it'll probably take another year for them to comply with Sydney, city ordinance. During my numerous complaints, there was a delay of issuing a citation. At one point, we were told they just simply couldn't locate the manager. If needed, certified letters could be sent to notify offenders, or steps could be executed to cite violators. I've been in contact with Councilman Garrett about these issues. He has helped push things along with code enforcement. I'm thankful for that. I hope he's having a speedy recovery. And I spoke to Director Pruitt today, because they violated the ordinance again this morning. He said he would be here for a presentation, that he'd be happy to come forward to speak on this. He would welcome change to the ordinance language and even change to some of the citation process. So, any help or guidance from city council would be welcomed and appreciated, and I appreciate y'all's time.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. Counselor Barnes? Oh, wait, I'm, I'm sorry, I turned on, I, I got the clerk first. I think she, Counselor Garrett wanted to say something.
Yes, on behalf of Counselor Garrett, he did want me to convey to the speaker, Mr. Frady, that he is in favor of sponsoring an ordinance to address your concerns. And so, he will get with the city attorney to see what can be done in this regard.
Okay, I'm sorry, Counselor Barnes.
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank you, sir, for coming down here. This is one of the things that's top of my list. And we're going to be having a retreat, and some of the issues dealing with, that I feel personally, that needs to be attended to as far as code enforcement, we're going to discuss those, as well as follow-up. And also, as far as the fines, unfortunately, you think that you can resort to human decency when you let individuals know, but not. And I think that what needs to happen are stricter, more stringent fines to get their attention.
Yes, sir.
And so, appreciate you taking the time, because you hit the buttons on a couple of issues that I'm concerned about.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you so much for taking the time. And I'd like to say something else, Mr. Mayor. That's why I like we have the public agenda. Because the public agenda is good as far as getting feedback, individuals taking your time to come down here to address a situation. I want to thank you again.
Well, this frankly is what the public agenda was designed for, is to allow citizens to be able to come before council with some issues that this council has authority to do something for. Many times, we have folks that'll come up in here, and there's nothing this council can do. And, but, Ms. Frady, I, I appreciate you bringing this to council's attention.
Yes, sir.
And I got a feeling you'll, you'll see it advanced a little bit from here.
Sounds great. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next is Mrs. Olivia Rose, representing Chattahoochee Adventure Company, regarding consideration for additional activities on the Whitewater Course. Ms. Rose, and, and it's not showing up on there, for whatever reason, we're having a problem, so I'm keeping the time here.
Okay, thank you. Hello, and thank you for your time. I am Olivia Rose. My husband, Jeremy Rose. I'm from Columbus and a longtime member of the Uptown community throughout its development. Our family has been actively involved in the Whitewater community since the inaugural season in two thousand thirteen. My husband and I have both worked in various capacities within the Whitewater community and the operation. We spent countless hours in Uptown and specifically dedicate much of our free time to taking our children to the river, swimming and teaching them about river safety, water education, and environmental stewardship. Our family was literally forged on this river, and its growth is really important to us as we build a future in Columbus for our family. We are passionate for the continued development of the Whitewater Course and the opportunities it provides for local activities, for our community, and attractions for visitors. We believe with a purposeful pursuit of creating an outdoor culture in Columbus, that we will continue to build an impressive national and international presence as a mecca for both unique whitewater adventure and outdoor lifestyle. Without consideration for benchmark additions, including additional activities and companies operating on the course, we will, as we have seen, a decline in its use and a need for increased marketing dollars to expand the reach versus seeing return locals and visitors who have a newfound love and passion for whitewater, the environment, and our city. We are not looking to divide the current whitewater market, but to multiply and amplify what we have already invested in. There was never any intention to only have one whitewater outfitter, and there are no notable commercially operated rivers in the country that have a single outfitter operating tours. We believe it is in the best interest of our community, the growth, the growth of our whitewater course and outdoor lifestyle investment, and the obvious financial implications that additional activities could bring to the city to expand offerings on the river, to include additional activities provided by additional companies. Competition, as we know, breeds better safety practices, ensures top-tier training procedures, and improves guest experience. We hope that we can continue this conversation in partnership with city council and Uptown Columbus to improve and grow our outdoor and lifestyle culture in Columbus for the benefit of our community and not a sole proprietor. I have provided a packet for each of you, which you will receive later. With our history, intentions, and efforts in regards to this consideration, please look over the material at your leisure to learn more about who we are, our operation, and our intended benefits for the community.
Thank you, Olivia. Counselor Kogle?
I think the, the irony is, I think most of us on council received an email on Sunday about riverboarding and the, the dangers of it. I was just wondering if you could speak on that. I, I mean, I just think it was a little ironic that I got that email on Sunday.
So, I don't know specifics around the proposed incident, but I would ask you if that occurred within a whitewater operation, or if that was the general public taking the opportunity to grab aboard or a boat and jump on the river themselves. Do you know? If they were with a whitewater operator, or were they with, with a company that, that runs commercial activity, or were they just out there on their own?
Yeah, I, I don't, just to the council, I, you know, I, I've been around here just as long as whitewater has been around and watched the dam blow up and, and, and watched whitewater flourish in our community and what it's done to our community. I have a little concern that we have created a little bit of a monopolistic environment for just one business around the river. And I, I just, I'm, I'm struggling with whether or not that aligns with our city values of not being able to include other businesses to use such a, a great resource that's in, in our community. One, that the tourism, I mean, not everybody wants to whitewater raft, and if somebody whitewater rafts and they come visit Columbus, do they come back to whitewater raft again, or do they come back to do something else on the river? And so, I, I think it's important that we have a conversation, or we at least open up a conversation about it, and, and allow, I guess, just, just to begin the conversation to, to kind of spread the love on, on the river. I mean, sharing is caring. And I, I don't, I don't know if that's means that we look at the management plan that, if, if we have a management plan in place, or if we look at the management, a management plan, or put a management plan in place that addresses all of that. But I, that's, I just want to lay it out there as a conversation for the future, maybe in a work session coming up, but.
Yeah, we, we have, council just approved a renewal of the M O U with Uptown, who actually is over that period. And, and that, that is a partnership that has been in place for, really, since it, you know, the dam was blown. So, and we have kind of relied on their management of that, and that includes vetting anybody else that wants to go. So, I think the conversation would be good, but certainly we'd need to, and I know Mr. Wolverton is here. I don't know if he has anything to add, or if he's just here to, to try to observe. But Ed, if you have anything that you want to add, we'd welcome you at the podium. Counselor Davis?
Well, I, I want to talk to this. Can I say couple?
Sure.
Young couple? It says here on the public agenda, you have a business, right? Chattahoochee Adventure Company?
Yes.
And you're asking for consideration for additional activities. Do, do you feel like you're being discouraged from?
Well, we actually.
Having activities?
On the Whitewater Course, yes.
I'm, okay, now, all right. Why would we discourage anybody from being able to utilize the river? Why would we discourage anybody from being able to utilize the river? It's always been my understanding that the vision of the river and whitewater is to allow the river to flourish, and to allow it to be a place for many, not just a few. So, I don't understand that, but that's, that's why I'm asking you what you're really coming here for, and you just told me that you feel discouraged. That concerns me. And I don't know the dynamics, but you're here for a reason, I don't know the whole dynamics, but certainly I would think that's something that our city would, and our community would encourage, is the utilization of many opportunities to gain the most out of our river, which is one of our greatest assets. And so, you know, I think that sums it up, really, that would be my reflection on this matter. So, I just wanted to ask you those questions, that question, but then respond to it from my perspective.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Mr. Wolverton, did you want to add anything?
Sure, good evening, mayor and council, so just as a reminder, Councilmember Kogel mentioned that she was here when the dam blew up, so Uptown went through a very deliberate and open and transparent process. We invited outfitters from across the southeast to come in and be vendors. We actually selected two vendors. One vendor operated less than a month, if even that long, and pulled out of the market, they were Nantahal Outdoor Center, a very established reptile group out of the North Carolina mountains, and they did not see that there was a market here that fit what their company vision was, so...
And let me ask, and you're saying a vendor for what part, two vendors for what purposes?
Whitewater rafting.
Just whitewater rafting?
Yes, sir.
Has any other opportunities been presented to you about additional activities out on the river?
Mr. and Mrs. Rose came to Uptown earlier this year to ask about a commercial operation for riverboarding, which is an action-packed sport, Jeremy is quite active in that, and he can probably tell you a lot better what it is, but it's essentially, if you're familiar with what's called, I call it a boogie board, you have a board that fits over your torso, you then jump in the water, in this case it'd have fins, goggles, other safety equipment, and they would actually navigate through the river on this boogie board-like device.
Right, I'm with you, I mean, there's going to be many challenges when you're dealing with a river, especially a fast-moving river. But is there, I mean, does the contract that we entered in with you prevent you from looking at other opportunities to have other activities on the river?
It does not prevent us.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else, are you good? No, okay. Counselor Kogel?
Oh, I'm still on, I never turned off.
Okay, I think that's it, no more questions, thank y'all for being here, appreciate it very much. All right, and finally, Mr. Erwin Jenkins representing AMCO Transmissions of Columbus, Georgia regarding the Columbus Consolidated Government's support of non-taxpaying businesses over its own taxpaying businesses in the city of Columbus.
Mayor, councilman, city manager, and everybody I know and don't know. My name is Erwin Jenkins, and I moved back home some 25 years ago to open a business. And in that 25 years, I've experienced a lot, a lot of success and a lot of tough times. One of the reasons I've been successful is due to the support of, of course, the citizens of Columbus and the surrounding area. And I, in no small part, due to the city of Columbus and the consolidated government and organizations like the Muskogee County School District Metro, who I also have contracts with, as well as the city of Columbus. The reason I'm here today, and I hate being here for this purpose, is that recently, I have been informed, and I've come to know that our city shop that I go out of the way to perform for and fix the cars at my AMCO Transmission Center has been sending vehicles, despite my contract, out of the city of Columbus, out of the state of Georgia, and to Phoenix City, to a transmission shop that does not have a city contract, does not even have, from what I understand, through the license divisions, and don't have a license to do business with the city of Columbus. Like I said, my business has been profitable and successful due in no part to the city of Columbus. I am here to ask and to pray that this particular situation be corrected. I would also like to say that I have absolutely no problem with a business and another transmission shop doing whatever they can do to get business. The only problem I have is that thinking of the city of Columbus using the citizens of Columbus' tax dollars, and unfortunately, my tax dollars to spend at another center in another state, in another city is something I would hope that we were correct. Now, I've, in the 25 years I've been in business, I've had the city contract to work on city cars for most of that time. And of course, to do that, you have to meet certain specifications, you have to have, you know, insurance in the terms of several million dollars to ensure that if we had a problem and we had some city cars destroyed, then they would be covered. And of course, I've done that, and I've met all the other terms of the contract and multiple contracts over the years, and I've been able to win those contracts and provide the service to the city. This is not, no small measure, so, that being said, I would just like to ask that we correct this one thing. My contract was recently terminated because, and I understand that when you make changes to an organization like this city shop, you, new management will sometime attempt to make changes to fix things. I would have had hoped that, before they did, that they would have contacted me and let me know that I may have been having some problems, and just like every shop in America in the last couple of years, having to do with supply chain problems, and of course COVID, which was, really hit my business hard, but we maintain and we have not had a problem with a single city vehicle that we didn't fix and get back to the city. So, with all that being said, I would just hope that we were considering and correcting that problem.
Mr. Jenkins, thank you, thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I asked Director Drill Short to come, and once I saw that Mr. Jenkins was on the agenda, and I'd like for her to speak to his comments. But I do want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Jenkins for his service, and and I believe we, you, we just awarded you a small business grant too, and congratulations on that.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
But, but Drill Short needs to speak to it, and I will say, I, I want to be, I have not been involved with Mr. Jenkins' contract, and I haven't, because one of my principles is, I don't, I don't get involved with vendors who are submitting bids, RFPs, period. They are not allowed to call me, talk to me, anything, I do not get involved, and wanted to say that. And, and so, even after the contract, I don't, and so I have not been involved with Mr. Jenkins, but staff can come and speak to the, to his comments.
Okay, Ms. Short?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Jenkins. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for giving me this opportunity. Mr. Jenkins, or I should say, AMCO Transmissions, is a vendor that we've dealt with for a long time. Basically, in the short, we've had various issues with this vendor as it pertains to the amount of time that they've kept the vehicles and the rework that we would receive back from them when they say the vehicle is repaired and it's not repaired. It was time to either make a decision to, whether to renew Mr. Jenkins' contract or not, we chose not because of the substandard work that we were receiving from the company at the time. So that is the reason why we did not move forward with it. Our plan is to re-advertise it and hopefully strengthen some of the specifications that we are requiring, because a lot of the vehicles, a lot of the equipment that we're receiving, a lot of it, the technology in it is changing, and therefore our specs need to change as well.
So, let me understand, the contract had a term and the contract expired?
Correct.
And so, we didn't renew?
We did not renew, we chose not to renew the contract.
Mayor, if there are questions for anyone, I'm sure the director can answer those questions.
There are no questions, there's, none of the, none of the lights are on.
Okay.
I have an additional comment, if I could. The problem that I have is that, under the terms of the contract, during the time of the contract before the incident that she just spoke of, we, as a city, were sending cars while I had a legitimate contract, without any due process or any notification that I wasn't doing anything, doing everything right. We were sending cars out of the state of Georgia, spending tax bill money-
Mr. Jenkins, and that's been noted, sir, I appreciate it, I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Okay.
I'm grateful for you coming down here and bringing this to us, but, but, but thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right, and that's it for the public agenda, Mr. City Manager, it's your agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I just got a couple of things, I've got risk management, legal services. We're asking your approval for payment of legal services rendered regarding risk management issues in 24 fiscal-
Motion second to pay the risk management legal services, is there any discussion? All right, Chris, you can cue it, we'll let them vote. Counselor Garrett? Counselor Garrett, all right, so that's, that passes.
I've got a $34,000 grant, there's no match.
Motion second to approve the grant, any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please enter your votes. Okay, that's approved.
Have a few purchases, have Mason-
All right, so you revised your motion to approve A through E? All right, there's a motion, all right, there's, and for E, so A, B, C, and D? All right. B, I'm sorry, okay, A, C, D, and E, there is a second, all in favor say aye? Any opposed? All right, Mr. City Manager, you walked through all of them, but we need to take a deeper dive in B and F.
Okay, so, A, it would be masonry products for public works in porch and rack on a as-needed basis. Did you say pull B?
Yeah, they need a little more information on B.
Okay, and C, dual-axle utility trailer, and D, flatbed dump truck with a 12-foot body, and I believe you pulled F also, so you pulled B and F.
Yes, sir, there are some questions about those two items.
Okay.
Okay, why don't you go through B, and then we'll see what questions the- All right.
Mr. City Manager, didn't, please help me refresh my memory, didn't we just purchase a $54,000 field trimmer or something in the last?
The thing that Counselor Begley talked about at the last meeting, is what you're referring to? That he asked to include in the budget, is that the?
I don't think it was in the, in the budget, didn't we, didn't Ms. Bratter come and, there was a $54,000? What was, what was the name of that?
Can't remember, but it was what keeps the lips from the edge of the grass and the dirt.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's-
Is that it?
Is it the same, is it the same piece of equipment?
I'm trying to remember the piece you're talking about, and I don't, but was it on the last agenda, is that what? Yeah, I thought that-
It was in the last couple of, couple of-
Yeah, I thought that we had a lengthy discussion on the piece of equipment that Counselor Begley brought, and you did finally approve it.
Was that the 54 million, $54,000?
It was $42,000, I believe. Yeah.
Is this that machine?
No.
And so this is in addition to that one?
Yes, this is different.
And were these in the budget, or not?
These were in this current budget that we are operating in, yes.
Okay, thank you.
They were approved, yeah.
Thank you.
But I think they're a piece of equipment.
All right, then there's a motion to approve B, and a second, all in favor say aye? Any opposed? All right, that passes, and now F. All right, the motion second to recuse Counselor Begley for what? Okay, that's good, all in favor say aye? Any opposed? All right, he'll step out. Is there a, is there a subsequent motion on F?
Well, I am going to have an update on the NIDQ here, but certainly you can go ahead and move on if you want to.
Well, I just turned off the podium, tried to turn your light on and you geeked me. There you go.
Mr. City Manager, I would like to ask you if you would pull this upon that we can have further discussion on this, I mean, what the information I read, I'm somewhat concerned, and it just goes back from conversations that we've had for many, many, many years of supporting some of our major assets contributing in our community, so I would ask you to pull this and that we can relook at this and understand it a little bit better, and in doing that, I think that you may have to maybe regroup and relook at this matter a little differently, but I'm concerned, so I'm asking you if you would, you would pull it.
I can certainly pull the item you're going to vote on, but we do have an update that we're going to share tonight.
Well-
Are you asking not to update you?
No, I'm asking not to vote on this matter, I'm asking for you to pull it and for us to continue this conversation, because right now it concerns me, but I will be willing to, I'll listen to the update, I may learn something.
Sure.
Counselor Thomas?
If we were to go ahead and approve this one, it would at least by July 1 be in place, and then we can revisit and come back to it if we need to do additional things to it, if that, the city attorney seems to think that would work.
Yeah, well-
Well, we've got, I mean, we've been going a long time without paying any of these folks that qualify for the NIDQ here, so...
And I think it will be helpful to listen to the update.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And so I'll go ahead and ask Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge to come around.
So, good evening, mayor and council, and this is in relation to the item that's on the city manager's agenda- So, good evening, Mayor and Council, and this is in relation to the item that's on, uh, the City Manager's agenda. Just an update on indigent care. I will say that this is an active RFP, so I can't share all the information because Council has not approved the item on the agenda, but I will, um, provide an update on indigent care and a little bit about the RFP and, and the selection that was made. And just as a reminder, there was a thirty-year agreement that ended June thirtieth of twenty-two. Um, and so there was some amendments to the charter, some, um, resolutions that were passed by City Council. And so, in the budget for FY twenty-three that's ending this Friday, included twelve million dollars, two and a half mils for indigent care. And Council did pass a resolution that once the completion of the RFP process was done, that anyone that was awarded through the RFP could go back to July one of twenty-twenty-two and submit for reimbursement of any claims that they had related to indigent persons based on the agreement that we would sign related to the RFP. And so, the RFP started in October, um, and there was, um, an RFP issued, uh, for, um, for medically indigent persons in Muskogee County, for inpatient, outpatient, and also for those incarcerated in the, in the jail that did not receive services through the medical provider in the jail. There are some things that that medical provider in the jail cannot do, that they have to transport inmates to providers within our community, and so this would also cover that. So again, just medically indigent person, they have to be a resident in Muskogee County. They cannot be covered on any, uh, private insurance or any other government program, and there is income eligibility requirements related to this program. So we received four proposals back. Um, the Medical Center Doing Businesses, Columbus Regional, Mercy Med, uh, St. Francis, and Tree of Life. Uh, there were voting members from various departments, uh, the Sheriff's Office, Finance, and we also had a private sector medical professional, uh, that sat down on the committee. Uh, we had a couple alternate voters, and then there were individuals from the City Manager's office and the City Attorney's office that also sat on the committee as non-voting members. So we did kick off the meeting in November of twenty-two. We met numerous times, reviewed the proposals. We had a lot of questions, um, going back and forth with those individuals that submitted proposals, um, for the first quarter of the year. We did formal presentations with all four that submitted a proposal. Um, we did the evaluations. The committee members that were, um, evaluators did the evaluations, and we came forward, uh, today with the request to award. Uh, the two that was recommended by the voting members unanimously was the Medical Center Doing Businesses, um, Piedmont Columbus Regional, and also, uh, Mercy Med of Columbus. There is, again, I cannot talk about specifics related to how the votes were taken, uh, but I will say that these two, uh, were, um, at the top of the list of, of the four, um, that were, that submitted proposals. And again, it was an extensive process. It was, um, very thorough process, and there were interviews, um, that were conducted with all four of the ones who submitted proposals. Uh, the annual contracts would be executed for one year, um, with an option to renew for four additional years. And so tonight, on the agenda, um, was the request to, uh, award the contracts to, uh, Columbus Regional and to Mercy Med.
And, and so, um, to Councilor Davis's request to delay it, there again, and, and I'll say once again, there, there's, it, it was, um, an RFP. And, uh, I don't know who's on your evaluation committee. I don't talk to them. I don't get involved in it, and they're bringing it forward. And so, it's an RFP process. And, and I can't reiterate enough that I don't tamper with the process. I don't talk to people. I don't get involved in it. And this team, when I get involved, it's when they bring it forward on my agenda. And it's only on my agenda, and what she's saying with the evaluation committee, I don't know what they've decided. I don't know what they've talked about. And so, it's here, and, uh, and then you would take this and you would go back at that point, if it's approved, and you would put it in force.
That's correct.
And then next year, one year from now, uh, others will have an opportunity.
The way this RFP was developed, would it, it would be, uh, a one-year contract, which would actually go from July one of twenty-two to June thirty of twenty-three. So at this point in the year, it would, um, be another one-year renewal of those, and it would be up to four one-year renewals unless we decided to, um, go out for proposals again. But it was a very lengthy and extensive process that I'm sure the committee members would prefer that it go the, the five years, although we haven't, um, had any submissions of invoices at this point. Um, and so, uh, can't really judge on the submissions that we would receive and, and the, the claims that would be submitted. Um, but we would decide whether to renew that for an additional year, um, probably at the completion of this current fiscal year as we're starting next week.
Councilor Crabbe?
Thank you. This does not look like what we voted on. I thought that we were, I thought that what we voted on was we were going to open it up to any, any entity that filled out the applications and applied. There were four that applied, and you only accepted two. We're, we're kind of back to where we were, except it's not a thirty-year contract.
So the evaluation was done by the voting members on certain aspects of the proposals that were submitted. And based on what was submitted in the, uh, proposals, as well as the interview and the additional information that we received back, and I say we, I was not a voting member, but on the committee. Um, so when I say we, I'm talking about the committee. Based on all of that, each one, each person that's on the committee goes through a scoring process. The committee then decides-
Can I interrupt you?
Yes, ma'am.
Because my point is, did the committee, you know, have the stipulations that we all discussed and we voted on? Because it doesn't seem like the, that committee or that RFP carried out what Council said we wanted to be carried out.
So if all four of the, um, individuals that responded met the requirements um, to the level that the two that we're recommending did, we would probably have, um, recommended all four. Um, but we're, our recommendation to Council is the two that we're recommending.
So there's some minimum standards that they have to adhere to?
There were, there were some questions that were asked, some statements that were made during the interview that the committee didn't feel comfortable making that recommendation to Council, um, except for the, the two vendors that's being recommended.
So they had an opportunity, but didn't meet the level of expectation?
Yes, yes. And, and the committee takes their job very seriously when they review these. Um, and so we wouldn't want to recommend to Council to approve an agreement that the committee didn't feel comfortable with.
So, and, and if we were going to just open it to everyone, we really didn't need a process. They just need to register.
That's correct. That would be, that wouldn't be an RFP. We wouldn't be evaluating them on specific criteria, on their, um, processes. Um, we had them do, well, I don't want to say a whole lot about the process, but we went through a process to recommend-
Yeah, and let me say this. We can, if, if that's what you want, you know, we can refuse any and all proposals. And we can just say, sign up. If, if that's what we're saying, you know, we can, what was that now?
Are there, are there federal requirements, or are there certain reporting requirements, or anything that has to be done from a record-keeping standpoint? Did that enter into it?
That, that was one of the requirements, um, uh, validating income eligibility, um, billing requirements. Um, that was all outlined in the RFP, the services that we, um, would be reimbursing for. Those were all outlined in the RFP. The, um, capacity and capability of the vendor was evaluated. Um, so there's a, a, you know, it was a, it was an extensive process, and, and the committee spent a lot of time reviewing the proposals, and again, we did interviews. We had a lot of questions that we submitted back, getting clarification, um, and that's the recommendation of the committee.
Good. Anything else?
And I guess not, 'cause I don't, I don't know. I, I remember this was one of the first things that I ever got my hands slapped on, was an RFP discussion. And so I'm kind of concerned on what questions I can ask on this. But I'm, I'm a little bit disappointed with the outcome, because it really, really feels a lot like the same blankety-blank contract that we had for thirty years.
Well, and I'll, I'll tell you, I'm, I'm disappointed, because I had envisioned a lot, all of these folks turning in something that would qualify them to be utilized, so that we could, we could maximize deployment, so to speak. But I also understand that if there's some shortcomings and they don't meet basic minimum requirements, my hope is that as we move on, we did a much shorter contract, and I haven't seen this. I don't, I, first time I've seen who all applied.
I'll go ahead and ask my question, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I don't mind.
And if, and then if you can't answer it, then you can't answer it. But there was an obvi, there's an obvious entity in this city that I thought would be, you know, part of this, you know, so that our citizens had choices of where they, the indigent care could go. And it, and it could, you know, spread around other facilities. And that's not what happened.
So, so I will say that not every person, or not every, um, organization that responded, uh, was willing to provide, uh, extensive list of services. Some of them provided very limited, um, services that they would provide to indigent.
You know, and, and I will say, Mr. Mayor, there was one organization, um, and, and I, when I saw what was on my agenda, um, I, um, I was disappointed that they, um, were not listed. And, and I asked the question of you, why are they not winning? And you told me they didn't apply.
These were the only four proposals that we received.
And I was just sure that, based on their location, where they are, where the poverty rate is, you know, but didn't get an, didn't get an interest in, in that organization, and I'm like, so I asked the question, you know? I just knew they would, you know, but, so.
Councilor Davis?
Let's see, Manager, I really don't know what that means, but-
What, what means?
What you just said. But anyway, the definition of indigent care, to me, is not expansive, broad, or complicated, okay? Uh, and that's what we're trying to accomplish, and I too, Council Crabbe hit the nail on the head. I remember those conversations, and we talked about mission objectives of what we were trying to accomplish in our community. And especially with our, uh, major providers that do an extensive job that some would consider, uh, have been left out in the past. That conversation, Council Barnes and I, and I know a little bit more about this. I'm not getting into the details about the RFP. I don't want to do that. You know, I, I don't know what those complications were, but I do know what the mission objective was, and I question that, because Council Barnes and I and others up here, we, we have a lot, we have extensive knowledge in this, okay?
Really?
Because we've spent many, many legislative functions at the hospitals, okay? So we know stuff. But I will tell you that, um, if you do a deep dive into indigent care and what everybody does, there are differences, big differences and major differences. And matter of fact, some of these people are probably the beneficiaries of some of these major healthcare entities in our town, that I bet not a lot of people know about that. And what they're doing with the various people that are on this list. So, you know, one thing that, that we did talk about was how, for thirty years, that an entity could have a corner on the market. And I say that for lack of a better term, but I'm just saying it. But look, all, all providers in this country, by law, you have to treat. If somebody shows up at the hospital, you have to treat them. And there's people treating them, and they're not being compensated, they're not being reimbursed, and they're still doing it. And I remember Dr. Butler spoke all the time about not just care for a few, but care for many, and don't turn anybody away. And we have talked for years at this body of what we can do, 'cause when, when you got entities that are paying the full load of doing business in our community, the full load, where others are getting benefits, you have to start questioning that, and that's a big conversation in our community, and that's really what I wanted to turn everybody back to, is the mission objective of that conversation that's been going on for a long time with key people in our community about equality. Equality. So I do have some concerns, because when, like Council Crabbe talked about, when we had these conversations about what we're gonna do, we talked about the RFP process. We talked about that, but we never, I don't think we ever got into deep detail of how we're gonna go about it. We just said, we're gonna put it out there, and then we're gonna see what shows up, and we'll bring them all back to Council. Well, in my mind, I thought the miss, mission objective was gonna cover all those that we have in our community equally that are providing indigent care. On the same level and the same basis, you can't say they're any different. And that concerns me, and I'm, and, and, you know, I, Ms. City Manager, uh, I asked you to pull this, because, you know, maybe it does need some going back and readjusting, but it, it does concern me. I'm not gonna get involved in this RFP process, but I can't approve it here personally today. I can't. And I'm not.
Well, and-
Because I think the mission objective, we're not completing it, regardless of the process, so. I just, I asked you to pull it.
And, and, and we can pull it, and, and, and so, based on what the committee has done, um, they've done their work and, and, and delivered the end result. And so if we don't like this result, it, it wouldn't be the first time that you voted down or we refuse any and all proposals. And, and if we just, you know, I don't know, um-
You said that you didn't really, you, you, you had some concerns too, and I would ask you like me, both of us have concerns. I would ask to go back and let's try to, I guess what I'm asking is, let's try to iron those out and see if we can relook at this thing in order to create that equality.
Yeah, and, and I'm saying, I don't think you can go back and iron them out in this RFP.
I'm not asking.
We, we'd have to start the process over again, which means we refuse any and all. And, and the, and the one that I mentioned, that you didn't know where, you know, you, I was confusing you maybe. Uh, there's only one healthcare provider in the heart of South Columbus. I, I, I hope you know, without my having to call the name, the healthcare provider. And, and so that's why I didn't call the name, but I just knew that provider would be one of them. But I just knew that provider would be one of them.
Well, and, and you may be right and I sympathize, sympathize with that. And I'm saying in general, you have concerns, I have concerns, so maybe we need to relook at this. But I know what I'm trying to say is this conversation is not new to this body and we've been dealing with it for a long, long time. Am I right, Counselor Barnes?
Well, well, I have too. Don't forget, I've been here.
I, I know.
I, I've go to, I go to, to the legislative sessions at St. Francis and I, I do them all.
And look, I'm not blaming anybody and I'm not, and I'm not throwing rocks at the process. I'm just saying the optics of it looks like we're back to where we were many years ago. That we were trying, and, and what I thought, what Counselor Crabbe said when we started this conversation about where we're going is we wanted to get away from that, that we're gonna look at everybody in an equal context.
Absolutely, and that's why I'm saying, you know, I don't get involved in the process. But when they weren't there and I asked the question, we're moving forward because I'm not tampering. And so at this point, based on what I'm hearing around the table, we need to refuse them all. And, and I am even open to, you know, let them all sign up.
I'm one council member, but I yield to the wisdom of the rest of the counselors, but I just know what I'm dealing with.
All right, Counselor Barnes?
You know, everyone who knows me, everyone here knows I've been involved in healthcare. And you know, this is what, this is not what I think the majority of us counselors have conceptualized. Because you know, there are a number of organizations here in, in the Columbus area who've been providing indigent care for years. And I'm disappointed. I'm not saying anything about the ones that were selected, they're good choices. But there are other organizations that we counselors, among talking among ourselves, have conceptualized that it'd be a number of these organizations for the many years that they've been out there providing indigent care to be considered. I'm very disappointed. I cannot vote for this here. And I think that we need to go back to the drawing board. And I'm glad to hear that you echoed that you expected so.
Yeah.
And it, and it didn't, and it didn't.
But they didn't apply, so.
But I know of others that did. And I'm shocked. I was very hopeful when I saw it in the agenda packet that we were going to discuss it.
Yeah.
Because I just knew it was going to be a number of organizations that this community, individuals in this community who are being served by these various organizations, who really need to have funding to continue what they've been doing, were not considered. I'm extremely disappointed.
So.
And I cannot possibly share what, what Glenn has said. I see a number of other heads shaking around the table. This is not what we counselors envisioned. We envisioned, let me finish talking. We envisioned a number of other organizations to be considered for this now. We don't know what the process, who applied or whatever. I, I would like to get some kind of information to know because I know a number of organizations called me and I told them to contact the Assistant City Manager Pam Hodge.
Yeah.
So the ones listed, Counselor Barnes, the ones listed that applied, we received four proposals. So the committee did what?
So four applied?
Four organizations applied.
Others did not apply?
Four total organizations applied. The committee reviewed those four proposals and recommend that we move forward with two of the four. For various reasons that obviously I cannot discuss the specifics of why the committee voted one way or the other. Because there are.
Repeat that, repeat that again, what you just got from me saying?
There were four organizations that submitted proposals. The committee reviewed those four proposals based on what they submitted as a response to the RFP based on additional information that was requested from the committee to all responders and interviews with each of those four. The committee only feels comfortable recommending to council to move forward with two of the four based on a variety of reasons. There are two that we would recommend and two that we would not recommend based on.
So, so the four is public information and they are listed?
Yes, sir.
And so one's the Medica Center, doing business is Piedmont. The second one is Mercy Med of Columbus. St. Francis LLC, doing business is St. Francis Emory Healthcare. And the fourth is Tree of Life Healthcare. Those are the only four that you received proposals from.
That is correct.
Just four. Others, like the one I talked about, they didn't apply. So they received four.
I, I cannot vote for this here. I mean, I don't know, and I'm not saying, repeating with the process. But at this stage of the game, because there are a number, I don't know what the reasons were, maybe something fell through the crack. But I, I just can't, I know a number of organizations here in Columbus have been doing indigent care for years. I'm, I am not adverse to the organizations here. I have nothing bad to say about them. But I just know that there are a number that have been providing indigent care. And to Counselor Davis's point, I think we just need to pursue, I, I, something fell through the crack or whatever, but I cannot vote just for that.
And so we, we can strategize, but so if we had accepted all four that applied, we would have people around this table not happy like me, if we accepted all four. So I am even open to, you know, just let them sign up on the list.
I'll just have some minimum requirements and then let them apply. I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know. I wouldn't go out for another RFP because then if you don't like what comes out of that one either.
They have to have the capacity to have a program that certifies that individuals are indigent. They're Musco County residents. I mean, there, there's a process that they need to go through. There's also a billing process that they need to be capable of billing at Medicaid rates. And so there are some requirements that need to be met. These were the only four that submitted a proposal. And the committee would only recommend two of those to city council that we felt met those requirements. We're happy to.
And I know I can't get into all that, but I want to ask you, were they stringent requirements? Were they, were they hard to? Because I'm, I'm surprised.
I would say no, if you're in that field, I would say no.
All right.
And we had a medical professional that served on the committee that provided medical advice as part of that process.
All right, Counselor Davis?
Yeah, Ms. City Manager, when you were talking earlier about the prisoner healthcare, is that just an exclusive deal now or will they go to the different hospitals like they usually do?
The, you're talking about from the Musco County Jail or prison and if we gotta transport them?
That we pay for.
Well, they would take them to the county hospital, which on this list would be Piedmont.
Well, if they got a special need that Piedmont doesn't offer.
I think Piedmont can send them out. How does that work?
I mean, right now, the, the provider at the jail determines where the individual goes if they can't provide.
They could go to either or, the, okay, so.
If the, if the organization will accept prisoners a lot of times.
Exclusive deal on that end?
It, I can imagine what that hospital specializes in, if that is the issue with the inmate, they're gonna take them to that hospital.
If the hospital accepts, a lot of times they, some, some places don't necessarily want inmates and the requirements of servicing inmates in their system.
And, and so I'm saying, you all tell us what you want because I, I'm not tied to anything on this matter.
You fault avid, avidly for the continuing of West Georgia, correct? I mean, that's been a concern in keeping the, that, the services there when West Georgia, when it closed, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the hospital, yeah, right.
You know, does anybody ever think about who provides pretty much all of the mental health care in this community?
I know, yeah, absolutely.
And, and who filled in that gap?
And they can certainly take them there too.
Exactly, but that's my, I'm, I'm concerned about that there's some things that one group does that other groups don't do.
Yeah, I agree.
Some may be some things, and I'm having a hard time adding it all up, but I use the word equality.
So it, it, it could, look, I'm, I'm really just open, it could be the major facilities that are, you know, automatically, I, I don't know, we could just have them sign up.
Well, when, when I started, I asked if you would pull it, that we could have a deeper dive into this and maybe talk about if that's going back and redoing the process, I'm okay with that. But like I said, I'm one council member.
Okay.
And whatever, I'll, I'll yield to my colleagues, but I, I cannot, I'm like Pops, Counselor Barnes. I see some of the things, the things that we've been dealing with for years here because we were involved in a exclusive multi-year contract. And I, I feel like we're right back at the same place.
Okay.
All right, Counselor Barnes?
And again, I want to reiterate, I'm not saying anything against the two. But there are multitudes of organizations here. And my thought was we were going to spread things out somewhat. So that those organizations that's been boots on the ground as well as the two that are mentioned would be able to continue just like the organization that you said that didn't apply. And so I know a number of organizations that had approached me and said that they were going to, because I don't know what the glitch is on this here, but I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm disappointed.
I think, I think everybody involved in this is at least surprised and at the most disappointed at the lack of participation in the process. And I don't, and like you, I don't know why it occurred. And the catch 22 is you can't go ask them. Because then if you as an elected official start dealing with them, now you've put them in a tough spot if they want to submit a, a proposal. It seems like whatever the minimum requirements are, whatever you have to do to validate that they're a resident, whatever you have to do to validate that they are in that income, whatever you have to do to validate that they are not covered by other insurance. Anybody that can do that ought to be able to apply for reimbursement. I mean, because, but the ones that didn't respond, my guess is they're unable or unwilling to provide some of those assurances. And they still won't qualify because if they don't validate that and turn it in, it's not gonna meet the requirements.
Well, so we, we can talk further, but again, I'm open to if they are a viable organization with a business license and that's the business they do, sign up. If you guys are open to that, I mean, I don't, it's no, we just want to make sure we take care of the indigent.
And I'm fine, we're out, we represent the people. And they call us and we know what, and, and I'm, I'm thinking along the lines that you're saying. I think that we need to, I, I am, I know of three or four organizations that I expected would be on this list here and were not. Organizations in areas where they have serviced individuals in this community for years. Both physical health and mental health.
So.
And so, like I said, I'm not discrediting, if you only got four, that's a travesty. I think it's a shame. I can't, I don't understand why, not from the feedback, positive feedback that I got from the organizations in the community that they would be able to provide more care because for years they have been providing it without having indigent care funding. The two organizations that you have, phenomenal organizations, I, I love the work that they have done. My take is that I wanted to have the wealth spread a little bit more among some of the organizations. I'm seeing heads shaking around the table here. So it's, this council is disappointed, not just Popples, this council is disappointed. And, and we need to do a relook at this here and, and start from zero or whatever we need to do.
So let me just say this, I hope your disappointment is not that they didn't do what they were supposed to do.
I didn't say that.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just saying, I'm talking around the whole table.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I hope the disappointment is similar to my disappointment.
There you go.
You know, and so, and that is organizations that you just knew, you know, and, and maybe they will the next time around. But, but Mayor, we can pull it. I'd love to hear your ideas if you will email them of what, where you think we go from here. Because the bottom line is, at least for me, I just want to make sure we take care of the indigent. And, and if we've got ten organizations on the list, I'm fine with that because that gives, people will have choice.
That's what I'm saying.
You know, and, and so unless it's an emergency, they can decide, I'm going to this facility, this facility. They, they will have a list of five or 10 or whatever the list is. And I'm fine with that because I, you know.
And it's not only about choices, it's about the organizations that have been doing this here, scrapping, scraping, taking care of people. And this phone has been buzzing because I know it's a whole bunch of feedback on this presentation here now.
Yeah.
So I'm not saying I don't want anyone to feed into, and I'm glad that you mentioned this, that I'm disappointed in what they did. If they were given guidelines, I just want to find out why the organizations that I know that I've been interfacing with for individuals and sending individuals to were, were not listening. And that's, that's my problem. I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, not pointing fingers at the process. And, and I'm not discrediting the organizations that are listed because they're doing a phenomenal job. We, as a council, I think, felt that the wealth would be distributed, I think you mentioned it too, did you just say something about that? The wealth would be distributed a little bit more equally among organizations that have been providing indigent care for years. That's my saying.
So, so Ms. Mayor, what I'd like to do is refuse any and all and we'll just have a new process.
That's it?
Whatever that might be.
I think, I think we probably ought to get a vote to do that, don't you think? But, but there's three more counselors though that had a quick word they wanted to share. Counselor Kogle?
Is there, you know, I wasn't around for the first vote, so, just from. Well, there we go. Thirty years ago, are you sure? Well, I, I guess what I would be looking for is a very detailed list of, an explanation of what the requirements are. Because I have a sneaking suspicion that based on some of our other requirements that we place out there, that those are extremely stringent and disqualified a lot of people. So if you don't, if you don't mind, if, if you can have a very detailed list of what, what those qualifications were and send it to us, I think that would help us in that.
We can share the, we can share the RFP. I mean, that was a public document that was available during the process.
So, so you can email a link to them?
I think that would give us a starting point because I just, just have that feeling that it's very stringent and disqualified people right off the bat.
Okay.
Well.
Counselor Thomas?
Ms. Mayor, this item was part of the city manager's purchases and it was pulled. There is no motion, as I recall, on the table either to approve this or disapprove this. And it would seem to me that we need to do one or the other. We need to approve it or disapprove it and move on.
I, I agree and I, and I yield to the city attorney, but I think you have to go farther and just kind of throw the RFP out as opposed to accepting it, don't you?
Well, we have not, we have not voted to do that. We have, we have not voted to accept this item. And so if, if we do, if we vote not to accept this item, then it's up to the city manager and his staff to do whatever is necessary to bring us another, another proposal. But you can't, you can't just pull it. It's gotta be, we.
Yep, that was, Ms. City Attorney?
I was just gonna say, like any procurement, you can reject any and all bids and start over. If you disapprove it, basically that's gonna be the effect.
Okay. Mayor Proton? Mayor Proten? Okay, all right, is there a motion to reject the recommendation? All right, there's a motion and a second to reject that recommendation. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I, I, I almost said thank you, and I don't know.
Accidentally hit your light, turn your light back on.
But, uh, but we will, um, we will refuse, um, any and all. And we, I'd love to have feedback from you as to what you would like to see. So with that, uh, we're gonna move on to updates. I've got the city hall update, um, got Director Ryan Pruitt.
Oh, there it goes. Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of council, I have a real brief update. Been here the last few meetings, just keeping you up to speed with city hall and, and our progress over there at this new facility. Um, so again, the phase one timeline, we've trained our certificate of occupancy on June 9th, 2023. The IT department began moving on June 20th, 2023, and finance began moving the next day, June 21st. Uh, today, we actually had two departments that started their moves. We had the cooperative extension, the job training division started moving today. Parks and Recreation begins moving tomorrow, and Human Resources moves on Thursday. And again, all departments, uh, tentatively scheduled to be relocated by the end of July. I'd like to personally thank all those, uh, department heads and employees that have been involved with the move. Uh, it hasn't gone perfect, we knew that it wasn't gonna go perfect. I appreciate them working with us as we uncover little issues here and there and work through, uh, anything to solve it. Would also like to thank Sheriff Countryman and his staff for working with us and providing security throughout the whole process. So again, here's the overall schedule. You may have noticed on your way into council chambers that there is a big poster located here in the CSC that has this same information on it. So again, IT and finance are now at the new facility, they are operating, uh, they are still unpacking. They had a lot of things from their previous location, but they are open. Uh, you can see the other departments, uh, when they will open, uh, in the new location. This is, uh, the first floor plan, just wanted to put this up here again, uh, just to kind of remind everything, everybody, the public entrances that are available, so north is to the right of the screen, which is 12th Street, there's an entrance there, bottom of the screen is First Avenue, top of the screen is Broadway, you can come in through the courtyard and access the facility that way. I just have some pictures real quick of the outside, just again, to give, uh, citizens, when they're walking down the street, they can find the front door. So again, the address of the facility is 1111 First Avenue. Uh, this is the entrance on First Avenue, you can see one of the moving trucks there, uh, unloading some material from last week. This is the entrance on 12th Street, and then the entrance on Broadway into the courtyard. The phase two timeline, uh, again, just briefly, uh, we'll start, we get the executive building at the end of next July, July 2024, we renovate it, and then in 2025, these relocations will happen at that time. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, Councilor Kogle?
Um, Mr. City Manager, could you refresh my memory? When everybody moves out of this building, what happens to this building? What, what, what is in this building, once financed, the tax assessor, the parks and rec?
You know, you're gonna have elections and tax assessor, is that right?
And tax commissioner.
And tax commissioner, uh, yeah, tax commissioner.
In this giant building?
Tax assessor, tax commissioner, elections, and then we'll, we'll be able to backfill whatever is needed. I, I think the tax assessor, excuse me, tax commissioner wants more space. So, but that's what's gonna be here at that time.
All right, Councilor Crabbe?
We had a lot of discussion about public parking.
Oh, I'm sorry, hit your light again, I turned it off accidentally.
We had a lot of discussion about, um, public parking and the parking structure, so where are we on that?
So, um, we are shooting to open the parking structure in August to the public, so we are utilizing it as, you know, employees are moving their personal stuff and things in through the building. They are parking, uh, on those first couple of levels to have easy access into the building. Uh, we also have some additional improvements that were a little bit behind the building in the parking garage to secure it, uh, for employees. So, the schedule is all those improvements would be completed in August, and then we would open it to the public at that time.
Okay, thank you.
And Ryan, I, I did have, uh, one of our security folks that wandered through there, make mention of the fact that we need to get the stairwells cleaned up. Uh, you're aware of that, I guess, yeah, there've been some individuals that have been camping, I think, in there, and it's, uh, it's really in bad shape. Count, yes ma'am, Councilor Thomas?
Mr. Pruitt, um, will the garage be locked, um, the entrance to the garage be locked?
So when it, uh, fully opens to the public, the first two levels will be open 24/7 for the public to park in the garage, the building entrance will lock after hours. Um, but the garage, the first and second levels will be open 24/7 for the public, and then the third level and above will be secured, um, for employee parking, as well as fleet vehicle.
And will our current employee badge open that lock?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pruitt, I think that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, and, uh, next I've got electric charging stations update, Everett Fleming, Assistant Director of Metro Transit, uh, Mr. Fleming.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, City Council, City Attorney, uh, City Manager, viewing and listing audiences. Uh, this evening, I just wanted to, uh, give a small presentation about electric charging stations. You know, Metro has been given the opportunity to purchase these charging stations with TIA funding to be a part of our park and ride locations around the city. And before I go on any further, I did invite, uh, we've been collaborating with Georgia Power and of course, Fire EMS, I believe they may be still here?
Yes.
And they're here, they could answer any questions at the end of the presentation.
Okay.
So ChargePoint, so ChargePoint, of course, is the largest, uh, electrical vehicle charging company. Of course, they've delivered 158,000 chargers around the world. Of course, you may ask, how does EV charging work? It works by pulling, of course, electrical current from a 240 volt outlet or grid that is hardware too, and it delivers that electricity straight to the vehicle. Of course, this is like plugging anything in your household, uh, into the wall, and you would get the same result. The importance of the EV charging station, of course, is gonna save on fuel costs and reduce emissions. So employees who can charge their car at work can help reduce the environmental impact of their commute. Next you get to see here is a brief chart, like I said, this chart is gonna show you the difference of how, uh, long it takes to charge your vehicle when it's empty, and, you know, and the per miles per hour that you can get to receive from a Level 1 versus a Level 2 charge. For an example, like the BEV charge time, like I say, from 40 to 50 hours of a 1 kilowatt from a Level 1, uh, to, uh, give you, of course, those are miles per hours, two to five miles per hour in doing so, the same as the PHEV charge time, which is the plug-in, uh, electrical charge, charger, which will give you anywhere from five to six hours, given the same rate of miles that you would see there. And the Level 2 respectively, from seven to 19 kilowatts per hour, uh, from four to 10 hours, then one to two hours for the PHEV, respectively 10 to 20 miles per hour that you would see. Next, I just wanted to just cover some brief facts, though of course, you know, the electric, uh, car does not need any oil, of course, it only requires a routine check for three fluids. Just your EV coolant, your brake fluid, and your windshield wiper fluid. Of course, if you have a DC fast charger, it will convert the AC power to DC within the charging station and deliver DC power directly to the battery, which is why they charge faster. Now, for the warranty, they have about five to eight years in warranty, but of course, right now, it has been proposed that a battery could last, if it were from 10 to 20 years, before it ever had to be replaced. So there are more than 3 million EVs on the road, and over about 130,000 public chargers across the country. Now, we've been granted, as Metro, with their TIA 2 fund, to provide anywhere from 10 to 12 electrical charging stations around the city to connect people to transit. And so, Metro, we are the link in the chain, of course, to keep things moving, as we do from point A to point B, provide service for the community. With these EV charging stations, you'd be able to connect your bus at the various bus stops of the approved locations. And of course, you know, a person may want to just take a, uh, park and ride, get a ride on a bus, or they just might want to go for a walk, a ride, or ride their bikes on the dragonfly trail. But what you will see here, as we go through, is gonna be some locations that were recommended by Fire EMS, and that were approved at the location that you will see here, as described. At the River Center Garage, Level 1, the northwest corner, of course, the Front Avenue Garage is a Level 1 at the west perimeter, and the north, uh, most center point there. Next you will see the Bay Avenue Garage, it's a Level 1, it's the northwest corner. At the New City Hall, it's a Level 1, the perimeter, uh, west center point location. At Broadway and 11th, we used to have a fast charger there, uh, when Verizon was providing that service. And of course, the conduit and all the construction is still there, so that's a great, uh, point for us, that we can still utilize that particular location. At the Civic Center, of course, is on the southwest corner, as you see there in that diagram. Frank Chester Rec Center, in the southwest corner, outside perimeter. Then, of course, at Shirley Winston, of course, uh, we've identified the, uh, location that you will see there in that diagram. Here at CSC, uh, City Service and Center, the Level 1 southwest corner, have been identified. And of course, at Manchester, uh, Express Park and Ride, we were looking at the first two locations there that you see there in the diagram. So now the city, of course, we're still looking at the Welcome Center, uh, Williams Road, but of course, that has been approved, so that is still, uh, pending before we can proceed and looking at that location. Metro has applied for a EEC BG grant, which is for like $218,000. We applied for that in reference to the city. And with that, uh, this grant allows the city the opportunity to have additional four to five charging stations around the city. So those locations, of course, have not been determined at this time, but, uh, we can identify those at a later timeframe. At this time, I'll entertain any questions. Uh, like I said, again, I have Mr. Brad Hill here from Georgia Power, and of course, if anyone, uh, I don't know if Fire EMS is still here, a representative, but if you have any technical questions, they can answer those as well.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Begley?
And you may have answered this, I just want to make sure I understand, because it says TSPAs, I heard you also say grant.
Mm-hmm.
How much money is coming from TSPAs versus a, a grant?
Well, this is all TIA funding, sir, which is a new 25 million.
Sorry, say that again?
This is the, this is the TIA 2 funding for the 25 million.
TSPAs, okay. So, do you have the total amount from the TSPAs focused on these EV charging stations?
Well, it would be dependent on which one we would be putting at the location. So a Level 1, of course, just to give you an idea, it could be roughly about $5,000 for a Level 1 charger, all the way up to, if you wanted to do a, a fast charger, that costs 50 grand, just for one fast charger.
Got it.
Okay, Councilor Thomas?
Um, Mr. Fleming, do you have any idea how many electric cars are housed in Columbus?
Uh, no, I don't at this time yet, but I'm sure there are quite a few.
If you were gonna guess, would you guess a lot, a few, not many?
I would say there were probably a moderate number.
Well, I, I also know that I have been told that, uh, the fire department has some concerns about, uh, electric, uh, vehicles that catch on fire.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it, it, um, as I recall, uses a lot more water, uh,
It's coming.
To put that, put those out.
Mm-hmm.
Two shores.
I'll let him cover that.
Hey, Chief.
Right, uh, Mayor and, uh, City Council, thank you, uh, for allowing us to speak. But yes, uh, so electric vehicles, uh, are coming, whether we like it or not. Uh, the fire service, I will tell you, is very, uh, much ill-prepared, uh, to deal with fires associated with electric vehicles. Uh, they are rare, uh, but when they take place, they are pervasive, and they are exceptionally dangerous, um, for our personnel to deal with. We just recently had a fire involving an electric vehicle, and, uh, not to go in specifics, but if you'll, you'll speak with the crew, they'll tell you, it was, it was a shocking experience, pardon the pun, uh, to be able to deal with that. So it, it, it was a bad situation. So, um, the electric vehicle charging station locations, uh, that we worked with Mr. Fleming on, uh, represent the fire department's opinion on, uh, where we could locate these charging stations and parking decks, uh, where they would be away from our fire suppression, uh, capabilities within the structure. Uh, but they're, uh, they're difficult to deal with, uh, we, some of our personnel have recently spent time in Atlanta, uh, with GM engineers, trying to better understand a way for us to deal with them, um, and, uh, they're, uh, they're challenged. So we will continue to, uh, you know, institute best practices in the fire service for dealing with these. But just keep in mind, uh, they are rare, but when they do happen, uh, it will not be uncommon for you to see us on the side of the road for three or four hours, trying to deal with a vehicle fire with an electric vehicle, and then having to follow the wrecker back to the wrecker yard, and then the wrecker yard having to isolate that vehicle in an area for 50 feet for the next week, uh, so they make sure that that vehicle doesn't light back up. Um, a lot of the technology's moving from 400 volts to 800 volt, uh, so they can use smaller conductor, and, um, you got a lot of stored energy, uh, that's trapped whenever you have an electric vehicle that, that catches on fire, so it's, uh, it's tough, but, uh, we've certainly been working with them, uh, working with Georgia Power, to make sure we keep these locations as safe as possible.
Thank you, Chief.
Councilor Begley?
I know you said it's 5,000 for the LV1 and 50,000 for the LV2. Do we, do we have a count, I mean, I'm trying to understand the presentation, how many LV2s are we suggesting, and how many LV1s are we suggesting?
Well, let me just correct you, uh, the 5,000 for the LV1 and 50,000 for a fast charger, a DC fast charger. The, the Level 2, no, we don't have a, a, a count at this point, but again, based on the amount of funds that we can use, I'm saying for the 10 locations, uh, we're looking at one, uh, per location. So if you have like a Level 1, for an example, uh, of course, that's roughly about 50,000, anywhere from 50 to 60,000 dollars, if you're looking at a Level 1 charge. For a Level 2, it could be, uh, again, of course, it's gonna be more than 5,000 per unit, it can be anywhere from about 10,000, so it's about roughly twice that, it could be like 120,000 that you're looking at. But if you're trying to get a fast charger, one costs 50,000, just for one.
So we don't have an aggregate estimate of what we're expecting to spend?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a aggregate total of what you plan to spend?
Uh, right now, uh, no, like I said, depending on the, uh, the location and the need of what we're looking at, so it's gonna be somewhere, anywhere under 200,000 or 200 to 300,000 dollars, I'm saying, looking at though. Yes, ma'am. Then, of course, that's whatever the Georgia Power, of course, is, be, uh, charging at that time.
Yeah. So you, you're gonna solidify the locations, and then Level 1, Level 2, likely no fast chargers because of cost, uh, but I know you've got TIA dollars, and you got a lot of TIA dollars.
That's correct.
And so, you know, uh, it's just a matter of, I think, you know, what we, what we want, you know?
All right, Councilor Kogle?
Uh, I might have answered my own question, but, uh, there's not any plans to put these on like second level in parking garages in the future? I don't, I don't know if you've been following the news at all. I don't, I don't know if you've been following the news at all about the parking garages that are collapsing in uh, in New York from the, um, from the weight of the electric cars since they are drastically heavier?
Yes, like I said, all these are the Level One, uh, or the exterior perimeter that have been recommended to us.
Okay.
And, and I think-
I guess there wouldn't be any future plans of putting them on second floors or third floors?
Yeah. And I think like-
Be a bad day.
Yeah.
Counselor Tucker?
Um, yes, I was trying to see exactly how much was in, um, the allocations in TIA for EV charging stations. What was the total that we had?
I, I, I don't, in, in TIA One for Metro or just altogether?
Altogether.
Um, I think Metro is the only, would be the only source for those, but we have applied for and awarded grants. I think four buses we're gonna get, electric charging, uh, electric buses?
Yes, sir.
Uh, four buses, and I think those are on order. And so you will have a, a, a charging station for those buses on your property?
That is correct, that is the, that is the future plan to do so, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so for EV buses and then we'll have the charging stations for those? Yeah, I was just trying to see, because I, I think, um, I probably can pull up the TIA chart and it, it probably will show.
I don't think we have any other, but I, I, I know, I, I believe the Warnock or Osoph ramp was four million for Metro for the buses.
Okay.
And, uh, but in the TIA, in the TSPLOS, you know, Metro got the twenty-five million and so they're doing all this other stuff and they can set us that money for electric charging. I don't think, w- we don't have this, City of Columbus, any other funding in the TIA. It's all speci- uh, specific projects like Steammill and all the others. We don't have any in there for electric bus, uh, electric charging stations.
Thank you.
Counselor Huff?
Yes, thank you. In the Frank Chester example you showed, uh, would that be one charger or two in that area?
Uh, it's looking at, uh, one right now.
One right now?
Yes.
Okay, would that be the L one or the fast charger?
Looking at the L one right now.
Okay, okay, um, my last question as far as that perimeter, uh, is that close to uh, any trees or anything adjacent property? I can't, I, I couldn't remember what side, is that when you first en- entered?
That's on the, yeah, when you first entered, it's the south side of the building, those first two spaces there.
First two spaces there, so that's going toward the, what used to be that bank or something?
Yeah.
I would say so, yes.
Okay, okay, but wouldn't be any danger there if we had a fire at the char- charging station?
Yeah, that's what was proposed and recommended by Fire EMS.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think that's it, Mr. Fleming. Just a little thank you for your patience for waiting here.
Thank you very much.
Ricky, thank you.
And lastly, we have the finance update from, uh, our finance director.
Hello again. Um, so this, uh, finance update is a snapshot for May twenty-twenty-three. Comparing May twenty-twenty-three to May twenty-twenty-two. And so, starting with the, uh, general fund, uh, the general fund is up seven point, uh, two-three percent. Um, this is largely due to our sales tax collections as well as our franchise fees, insurance premium tax, occupation tax and court fines. Um, the other local option sales tax fund is up six point nine-three percent. The stormwater sewer fund is up nine point, uh, three-four percent. Uh, this is largely due to the erosion control fees and increase in those as well as the transfer in from the general fund. Uh, for the paving fund, that's up eight point zero-four percent. Again, largely due to the, um, transfer in from the general fund relative to the pay study. The, um, intelligent care fund is down eleven point two-five percent. Um, this decrease is due to the millage rate, uh, there was a lower collection, um, millage rate assessed for uh, this fiscal year than the prior year and that's why it shows a decrease. Um, the integrated waste fund is up eleven point four-five percent. Um, again, this is largely due to the residential fee, um, revenue restoration that, um, occurred in FY twenty-three. Uh, there was a one-month waiver in FY twenty-two and so that's why it's showing an increase, um, this year over, um, overall in terms of revenues. Um, the, uh, emergency telephone fund is up six point zero-nine percent. Um, economic development fund up one point two-six percent. The debt service fund up twenty-seven point three-zero percent. This is largely due to an increase in the debt service millage, um, for the new city hall. The transportation metro fund is, um, down ten point eight-seven percent. Um, this is due to grant reimbursements and the timeliness of those reimbursements. There was one particular grant, um, with the, uh, Georgia Department of Transportation that was recently executed. It represents the entire fiscal year, so we did receive or are, will receive three quarters within, um, the, uh, next few days, uh, for, to close out the, the fiscal year and then we'll receive the final quarter after the, um, fiscal year has ended. Um, but we have submitted that request for reimbursement, so, um, that would be the, the reason for the declination there. For the trade center fund, it's up, um, four point two-six percent. Uh, this is largely due to the space rental fees. Um, Bull Creek Golf Course up twenty-seven point eight-one percent. Oxwell Creek seventeen point four-four percent. And then the Civic Center Fund is down thirty-eight point eight-nine percent. Again, this is, um, due to some grants that we received in FY twenty-two that, um, we have not received in FY twenty-three. Um, moving down the snapshot to the other local option sales tax, uh, public safety summary, we've recorded to date about twenty-seven point eight uh, million in revenues. Uh, we've expended about twenty-eight point five million, um, in, uh, expenses and that is for personnel operating, uh, and capital, um, expenses. Um, moving further down the snapshot to the other local option sales tax fund, uh, infrastructure summary, um, we've recorded just over twelve million to date for revenues and, um, expended about nine point two, almost nine point three million, um, in expenditure for those pay-as-you-go projects. Uh, moving to the left side of the snapshot, you'll see the general fund expenditure, um, budgets for all of the departments in the general fund. Um, the goal at this particular point is to have, um, greater than eight percent left in the budget. Um, again, because this is, um, May and we are about to end FY twenty-three, you know, at, at the end of this week. So we do anticipate or should expect about eight percent, um, retainage in the budget as of this point. Those departments that are highlighted there in yellow are those departments that currently do not have that eight percent, do not meet that eight percent target. Um, starting with the city attorney's litigation, again, we're still obviously defending, uh, millions in claims, um, for legacy terrorists. For the real estate budget, that is, um, right now below the, the threshold. Uh, we may have to come back relative to legacy terrorists, um, at the next meeting, possibly. Um, there are some expenses that, um, will sort of dip into and, um, may exceed the reserves that we have for legacy terrorists. Um, so we'll probably come back on that one. Um, so it is legitimately on the watch list at this point. Um, also, uh, we have the, uh, Fire, um, and EMS department. They've come before this, uh, council requesting additional appropriations for various operational expenses to include food over time and, uh, vehicle maintenance. Um, MCP also on the wa- watch list, they're at seven percent. Um, they were here just last week, um, requesting additional appropriations relative to, uh, food and some of the inmate medical expenses and supplies. Um, the public defenders, uh, is listed here at seven percent and that is due to us paying that monthly contract, uh, in advance. And the non-categorical that's listed there, um, that is, um, the, um, department in which we process all of our, um, transfers, inter-fund transfers, um, that's done, um, you know, with our mid-year budget amendment and I don't anticipate that, um, going over from an overall perspective for FY twenty-three. Um, that in a nutshell is the, uh, finance update and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you.
Yeah, we got a few folks, Counselor, uh, Davis?
Thank you, Mayor, Madam Finance Director, just a quick question on the budget in general. The health management fund, that is with the benefit, is that with the health, uh, plan that we just, uh, is that a fixed number or does that adjust? Is that the, the, does that relate to the clinic or to the healthcare plan?
The health, um, the health insurance fund?
City's contribution?
It, okay, so it's all encompassing. The health insurance fund, um, does house the expenses for the health and wellness center. It also houses those expenses for just, um, you know, medical expenses for employees and such. Um, the contributions from the city as well as employees also are deposited into that fund, um, as revenue.
Is that fixed, a fixed fund, a fixed amount or does it, is it variable?
So it's not fixed per se, I mean, it is adjusted based on, um, the need, if we need to adjust the budget, but from a budget standpoint, um, we do, um, allocate out the expenses for the health insurance fund amongst all of the funds per position, by position.
Right, right, okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Can you, what is legacy terrorists?
Okay, so, um, legacy terrorists is some property that, um, the city acquired and maybe the city manager is a better historian at this, um, to really give it some background, but I believe it was property that was once owned by Fourth Street Baptist?
Well, no, it, it, it was a property, um, um, through a CDBG, um, loan, grant, um, Fourth Street Towers.
So is it the Easter egg hel- Easter egg houses over there by, um, the jail?
Yes, those. And so we acquired ownership of those back many years ago and then we contracted with the housing authority to manage those. And, um, we don't look to make profit, but the housing authority did such an exceptional job with them. Uh, they were able to accumulate dollars that we were able to save and then use those for maintenance upkeep and for major projects, um, that we wouldn't have to go back and, and, uh, put, um, just city dollars into them, so we've been fortunate.
So they're self-sustaining?
Yes, housing authority has done an exceptional job. And I don't know when they will meet the affordability period, or they may have already met the affordability period where we could start to do something different with them, but we own them and those are the apartments.
And so we will probably come back at a later date, um, to request additional, um, funding relative to some of the maintenance, the major maintenance. As the city manager has stated, we've been setting aside, um, the revenue over a period of years and that has really sustained and covered the maintenance. But, um, with this latest, um, this latest bit of work that needed to be done, we may have to, um, request, um, additional funding. And I didn't want to do that without the, um, real estate director or a representative being here, but-
Yeah.
But I know what it is.
Under Rob Scott, community reinvestment, but, but I, I don't think, I, I don't know exactly what we've got to do, but I know that we've been very successful in that the housing authority, we've had to do some major things before, but we were able to pay from the, for, for those major improvements out of the proceeds we received from, from rent. This, this sounds like something we may not have enough to cover at all.
What, right, we did receive council approval, um, for the, uh, to proceed with the work, it's just that now it's gone above what we have.
Sure, I'm trying.
All right, that's it.
That- Well, it has been for many years, this sounds like something new.
It is something new.
Well, it's, uh, actually elderly and disabled persons, so, but we'll, I, I don't know exactly-
Yeah, I have not.
What she's got, but we'll see. Um, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
All right, thanks, sir. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. For the clerk's agenda item one, our minutes of yours boards to be received.
Is there a motion to receive the minutes? Motion second, all in favor say aye. Anybody opposed? They are received.
Next, we have board appointments, we have the mayor's appointments, any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. Uh, very briefly, the Yodde Committee, this was a recommendation from the Charter Review Commission and was approved by the voters.
Yeah, I've got two nominees, one is Mike Baker and the other is John Redmond.
And they may be confirmed.
All right, it's a motion to confirm and a second, both those individuals, all in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation for the Planning Advisory Commission, the C-
Motion second to, uh, confirm-
Approve Ms. Gloria Thomas.
Ms. Thomas, uh, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Ms. Thomas is confirmed.
Next, we have council district seat appointments, any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. The Community Development Advisory Council, we have the council district seat, uh, council district nine seat available. For the Public Safety Advisory Commission, we have the seats of the council district two representative, council district five and council district six that are open for nominations. Next, we have council appointments, any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. The Animal Control Advisory Board, the seat of Stephen Waters, uh, he has resigned, his seat is open for nominations. Uh, with respect to the seat of Ms. Julie Friar, she did previously submit a letter of resignation. This was not officially presented to the council for, uh, to be officially received. And therefore, um, it has, it is my understanding that Ms. Friar does want to retain this seat. And so if the council is amenable to it, uh, I would suggest that she be allowed to withdraw that resignation and then, uh, assume, uh, resume her position on that board.
Well, that would require a vote to allow her to rescind. There's a, there's a motion and a second to allow her to rescind her letter of resignation. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Counselor Begley?
For the first opening, uh, by Stephen Waters, I would like to nominate Lori Turner, um, for that board.
Okay, and we will bring this back at the next meeting for confirmation.
Counselor Davis?
Yeah, Madam Clerk, forgive me, but I'd like to go back to the Public Safety Advisory Commission and, uh, nominate, uh, Chris, Christopher Poyer, uh, for District Two.
And he may be confirmed.
Motion, motion to confirm Mr. Poyer, is there a second? All right, motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? He is approved.
Next, we have the Yodde Committee. Um, these are council's appointment. We have a new member, uh, this new member must be, have a finance, accounting or governmental, uh, background.
I nominate, uh, Counselor Begley.
I nominate, Mr. Michael Ruder.
Okay, we can confirm.
And I believe we can confirm the, uh, members of council, Counselor Begley and Tucker.
Motion second to confirm Begley and-
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second, thank you.
The two councilors, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? They're confirmed.
And the other new member, we will bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting.
Okay.
Could you repeat that one?
Mr. Michael Ruder?
Next, we have the Building Authority of Columbus, the seat of Leela Carr, Counselor Huff is- Oh, no, no. Oh, that's okay, that's okay. And we will bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. For the Columbus Aquatics Commission, we have the seat of Bruce Samuels, that's open for nominations. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and we do have a request to go into executive session to discuss litigation and personnel. Uh, we have a motion to go into executive session, we have a second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are in executive session. All right, we have been in executive session, we discussed litigation and personnel, there were no votes taken. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion second to adjourn, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.